And we are ready to go. I'll call the planning board meeting, Londonary Planning Board meeting to order for April 5th, 2023. So time marches on. First part of the meeting is that we do have administrative board work where we get our business done. And then the, we have several plans. It could be a little, a little bit lengthy, but three have been continued. And before I really get going here, I just want to point out for everyone who is here that this room has two exits. They're on the right-hand side of the audience, they're at the front of the room and the back of the room. If we need to evacuate for any reason, we ask you to proceed through the exit closest to you, move outside, and move away from the building. And don't come back into our fire officials have instructed us to do so. I'd like to ask, are we going to please rise and pledge allegiance to the American flag? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as its own.
Okay, just want to say congratulations to Ted Combs and Ron Dunn for their recent election to the town council. Ted Combs is going to be our ex officio and Chad Fratz will be the alternate ex officio. Ted has indicated he's going to be a little bit late tonight, so his spot is open. We have, let's see, one member cannot make it tonight, Jeff. I'll point Roger to vote for Jeff. So that gives us eight voting members as a quorum and we can proceed. So administrative board work, approval of minutes. We have minutes from March 8th, 2023. And any questions? There are not any questions, I'll take a motion to...
Motion to approve the minutes of March 8th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Al, second by Jake. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions?
Yeah.
Bruce, Gianni. Chair votes affirmative and the minutes of March 8th, 2023 are approved. Regional impact determinations, we have three, don't we Kelly?
Yes, Mr. Chair, three this evening. First is an application for design review of a site plan amendment for the retenanting of commercial suites, parking lot upgrades, and associated site improvements. 33 Lunedary Road, map 10, Lot 87, Zoned C2, Faucet Properties LLC is the owner and applicant. Second is an application for formal review of a subdivision plan to divide one lot into two, 55 Pettingill Road, map 14, Lot 49-3, Gateway Business District, One Pettingill Road Realty LLC is the owner and applicant. Last is an application for design review of a site plan to construct two building condominium development with a total of eight units and associated site improvements. 14 Mohawk Drive, map six, Lot 35-8, Zone C1, First View LLC is the owner, De Rosa Development Company LLC is the applicant, and staff is recommending that none of these projects are of regional impact.
Board, do you have any questions? If not, I'll take a motion that we...
So moved, Mr. Chairman, that these do not meet the requirements for regional impact determination.
Second.
Okay, motion by Al, second by Jake. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Chair votes affirmative. Motion carries. Those three projects are not of regional impact. We'll move to discussions with town staff. Kelly, and John's not here tonight. John was not feeling that well, so...
That's correct. Just a reminder, I'm not sure if you wanted to take this up now or later, but there's a continuance request for the last three agenda items.
Oh, okay, we might as well do it now because I was going to do it once we get through here, but that's, that's fine. So the last three items, I have to take these individually because the, even though they're continued to the same date and everything, they're individual projects and there could be different people here for them. So the first one that we've had a request for continuance is a public hearing on an application for formal review of a subdivision plan to divide one residential lot into three lots, 86 High Range Road, tax map six, Lot 106, Zoned Agricultural Residential One believes realty, real estate holding LLC is the owner and the applicant, and they have requested that we grant continuance to May 10th, 2023.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second. It's almost together there. Bruce, Bruce has got the second, so... Any discussion by the board? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Chair votes affirmative. And the public hearing for an application of a subdivision plan to divide one residential lot into three, 86 High Range Road, has been continued to the 10th of May at 7:00 PM right here. This is your only official public notice.
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to clarify, I abstained on that one and probably the other two.
Yes, reflected Gianni is abstaining on those. Let's see. Okay, public hearing on application for a conditional use permit for Lunedary zoning ordinance section 6.3.1.1(c) and use table 4.1.2 to allow multifamily residential use in the Route 28 Perflama Sobolee District, 215 Rockingham Road, tax map 15, Lot 23-2, Zone Commercial 2, and Route 28 POD, and 217 Rockingham Road, tax map 15, Lot 22-1, Zone Commercial 2, and Route 28 POD, VNW Investment Group LLC are the owners and the applicant, and they have requested a continuance to the 10th of May.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, to grant the continuance.
Second.
Motion by Al, second by Jake. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? And Gianni abstains. And Chair votes affirmative and motion carries. And just want to announce to the public that this conditional use permit for Lunedary zoning ordinance, section 6.3.1.1(c) and use table 4.1.2 to allow multifamily residential use in Route 1, Route 28 Perflama Sobolee District, 215 Rockingham Road, and then so forth, that plan is continued to the 10th of May, 2023, 7:00 PM right here, and this is your only official public notice. Okay, next is, we have a public hearing on application for a site plan and conditional use permit to merge two existing lots, tax map 15, Lot 22-1, and map 15, Lot 23-2, and construct a 16-unit multifamily residential building with associated site improvements, 215 Rockingham Road, tax map 15, Lot 23-2, Zone Commercial 2, and Route 28 Perflama Sobolee District, and 217 Rockingham Road, tax map 15, Lot 22-1, Zone Commercial 2, and Route 28 Perflama Sobolee District, VNW Investment Group LLC is the owner and the applicant, and they have requested continuance to the 10th of May.
Move for the continuance to the 10th of May.
Second.
Motion by Als, second by Bruce. Any discussion by the board?
Get out of here.
Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Gianni abstains, and Chair votes affirmative and motion carries. And the public hearing on an application for a site plan and conditional use permit to merge two existing lots for a 16-unit multifamily residential building at 215 Rockingham Road and 217 Rockingham Road is continued to the 10th of May, 2023, at 7:00 PM right here. This is your only official public notice. Okay, back to the top. We do those in case there's someone here that is in for those plans, so they don't have to sit through the whole thing and then find out the plan is continued. First, what we have here at the top, I gotta get back up to the top.
I have a couple of extensions.
Oh, sorry. You caught me on a roll. Sorry.
So I have an extension request for Outdoor Pride Landscaping, which was approved by the board, conditionally approved by the board on December 7th, 2022. They've requested an extension to July 6th, 2023.
Okay.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion by Al, second by Jake. Can they have it completed by then? That's my only question.
I believe so.
Oh, okay, okay. So motion by Al, second by Jake. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? And Chair votes affirmative. Motion carries, and that extension request has been granted to the 6th of July, 2023. And there are two more, isn't there Kelly?
Correct. One is for the Penachuk Tank and the other is for the Penachuk Booster Station. Both were approved in December of 2022, and the extension request is, they're requesting to extend to June 6th, 2023.
Okay.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Jake. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All, anyone opposed, say nay. Abstentions? And Chair votes affirmative and motion carries. And those two extension requests have been granted to the 6th of June, 2023. We have two lot line merges. And one is for 174 and 178 Rockingham Road, and there's the application here. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but get the location. And the other is, let's see, Michael C. Peterson and Kathleen A. Peterson, trustees of the Michael and Kathleen Peterson Trust, Seven Constant Drive, and they are merging parcel one is tax map six, Seven Constant Drive, Lot 59-13, and parcel two, 13A, Constant Drive, tax map six, Lot 59-13A. So if, any questions of the board, we can get them answered. If not, I'll take a motion for the Chair to sign those two lot line merges.
Motion for the Chair to sign the lot line adjustments.
Second.
Okay, motion by Jake, second, motion by Al, second by Jake. Excuse me, I'm looking at Jake. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? And the Chair votes affirmative. And the Chair will sign those two extension requests. Okay, anything else Kelly?
That's all this evening.
No, okay. Anything from the board? I think we want to get moving along, so...
All right, quick question. Do we have a, Ted is now our town council's ex officio, so does that mean we have an alternate position that's open?
We have an open, open alternate position. Kirby has advertised and is advertising for it. I want to understand the three applicants so far.
Fantastic, thank you.
So at least there is interest. Sometimes we usually get more, so...
Yeah.
Which is good.
Absolutely.
Okay, first item on our agenda, our new plans, is a request for removal and trimming of trees by EverSource along Adams Road, a designated scenic road pursuant to RSA 231: 158. And RSA 231:158 says that on a town designated as scenic road, if there's any like tree trimming or cutting or anything, it goes before the planning board. It does not mention anything about a hearing, it does not mention anything about what the board's supposed to do, it doesn't mention anything about whether the board approves or disapproves. It's simply information for the, for the board. So is anyone from EverSource here? Oh, yes ma'am, come, come to the front here, or you can stand if you want. I just need your name and address for the records, please, and if you can just...
My name is Allison Markcott, 7 Ross Drive, Lunedary, New Hampshire, and I am the utility arbers for EverSource.
Oh.
So I'm the one that put forth this request. We are doing our maintenance trimming on Adams Road, so we're seeking approval for doing some trimming, and there is about six dead due to declining trees along Adams Road that we are seeking to remove within the scenic road. All abutters and private trees on Adams Road have been notified.
Okay, and, okay, I can't find my thing here, so bear with me. We have a, so they're all, they're all marked all along here.
Not on that map, but that is the map that we are trimming for our routine maintenance. We trim every four to five years, so this area is up this year to have its routine maintenance trimming.
Okay, because I know there's been, you know, trimmings in the past, and they have identified the trees and think they even have been identified, so prior to this, the board could go out and look at them. Most of them are dead.
Yes, I did send a spreadsheet with this list of the dead and hazardous trees along Adams Road. I didn't know I needed to mark it on that map, otherwise I would have for you.
Been handy for us, at least.
Yeah.
I know there's, at least for one, or probably more board members have been out there.
Page five.
Right there, right there, scenic road stuff memo.
You have to excuse me, I am...
In page five.
Down in there, I hadn't gone through. I am new to the position.
I've only been here for a year and four months, so...
Oh, okay, well, bear with us, please.
Oh, no problem.
Are any of the trees, you guys have taken down, some of the older growth trees that are along the road?
Yes, they're pretty much dead.
Which ones would they be?
We...
I don't know if there's a way you can point them out, maybe on a, on our GIS system or anything like that. That would be good to know.
Were they the ones that were, that had blue ribbons?
Yes, they have blue and white checkered ribbons on, marked on them down Adams Road, are the ones that we are interested in removing, and with removals, we will remove wood unless homeowner requests that we leave the wood.
It would have been nice if you had mentioned that, or we got a notice that we could look at them and we could find them easily by that designation in the future would be helpful.
Yes, no, I apologize.
Even though there's no approval or anything by the, by the planning board, the board certainly can go out and look and give its comments, maybe to Kelly, who could give them to, to you.
Yes.
You know, I don't know if you can find it on, I know Kelly's got the satellite up here.
So the majority of them...
Particular old growth ones.
Yes. So there, there is a fair amount at one Adams Road. It's a bunch of pines that are all dead.
I saw those.
So those are the ones that we are looking to remove.
Any action?
I have a large 30-inch pine at 14 Adams Road that has a large rot on the back, and that one's across the road.
Yeah, I saw that.
And then we have, I don't, I believe there's three other at 14 that also have rot either at the primary or is starting to uproot. And then at 56 Adams Road, there is some maples that are leaning and uprooted and rotten the trunk. 73 Adams Road, there's two dead elm trees. And 90, there's two maples. One has a rot in the trunk and the other one has a hard lean and is close to the primary wire.
Okay. So none of those are any of the very large ones along that stretch of Max Apples there, right?
I do not believe so.
Okay.
I believe, my largest diameter is one pine that's 30 DBH and one maple that's 32 DBH, and that's by 90 is for the maple that's 32.
Yeah, I know which one those two are.
Yeah, I went looking for the ones that were the maples, the three maples that you had listed, and I agree with all of them, so I'm all set.
Have you been out there at all yet?
Yes, I went and looked back and forth.
Okay, okay. Any other questions from the board? If not, there is a motion which could be in contravention of statute, but that's okay. I think I just conditioned it for maybe this week for the board to take a look if they have any questions to let Kelly know, and I can get back to you. When, when do they plan on starting the cutting?
We can, once, once we hear back from you guys, that's when we can start the, the cutting on that road, so it's depending upon...
Let's say the deadline's Friday. For any comments on the trees.
Yep, and I'll be, I'm more than happy to meet any of you out there to, to do discussion and stuff like that, so...
Okay, yeah, good. You can leave your contact info with Kelly and we can always...
Yes.
Hold you directly. Okay, Al.
Okay, although it's not a statutory requirement, I'd like to make the following motion to make it a matter of record, and that motion is to approve your request to conduct trimming and removing trees and brush new EverSource power lines along Adams Road within the Adams Road right-of-way for the purpose of improving electric service reliability per the request filed by EverSource Energy dated February 9th, 2023 in accordance with staff recommendation memorandum dated April 5th, 2023.
Motion by Al.
Second.
Second by Jake. Any further discussion on, on this? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? And Chair votes affirmative. Motion carries. Any comments from the board after viewing by Friday, 5:00 PM? You can do it. I'm sure people will be watching also.
Yes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Yes, 30 years ago, when we made it a scenic road just to the west of, intersect with the crossroads, there was these beautiful maples that lined both sides. Most of them have passed away since, so it's not the scenic road it used to be, but times change.
Yep.
Okay, the next item we have is a public hearing on an application for a formal review of a condominium conversion at 9 Button Drive, tax map seven, Lot 132-22, Zone Agricultural Residential One, Brenda Kiss and Doreen Figuerre, the owners and the applicants, and there is a completeness for this.
Yes, Mr. Chair, there are no outstanding checklist items, and staff is recommending application is complete.
Okay. No questions from the board, I'll take a motion for...
Mr. Chairman, motion to accept the application as complete per staff's recommendation memorandum dated April 5th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Al, second by Jake. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Chair votes affirmative, and motion carries. The application has been accepted as complete. What this means is that we can start the public hearing, and also starts a 65-day timeframe in which this board has to render a decision. So just identify yourself for our, our records, please, and we'll proceed.
Good evening, my name is Joel Conley. I'm a licensed land surveyor with the debate group. I'm representing Brenda Kiss and Doreen Figuerre on this application in front of you. The property consists of an existing duplex, the proposal is to change the ownership to condominium and turn the duplex into two condominium units. There are no physical changes proposed with this application. We've met with staff and made sure all their concerns were addressed. We've also applied for and received state subdivision approval, so that's all set. We are requesting a waiver of the section 3.05 utility clearance letters because it's an existing duplex and has existing services already, so there's no new services proposed. I think that's about it. So, do you have any questions?
Okay, what we'll do is, like we'll do with all the, is go to staff first for input, the board, and then the public, or Kelly.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the applicant's, as stated, is requesting a waiver from section 3.05 and subdivision regulations to not provide utility clearance letters as required. Staff supports the waiver request as the structure shown on the plans is existing and no new utilities are proposed or being requested. In terms of conditional approval, staff is recommending conditional approval, subject to our standard precedent and subsequent conditions, which include recording of the plan and any legal documentation, things of that nature.
Okay, board, I'll start with Ian.
I have no questions.
Jason.
Questions.
No questions. Al.
No questions, Mr. Chairman.
Gianni.
Questions.
Roger.
No questions.
Bruce.
Satisfied.
Seems pretty straightforward.
Okay, yeah, technically it's a subdivision by statute, so... Any member of the public or any abutters have any questions, comments, and concerns in regard to this condominium conversion? I don't see any. I'll bring it back to the board and we will make our decision.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the applicant's request for the above waivers outlined in staff's recommendation memorandum dated April 5th, 2023.
Second.
Okay, motion by Al, second by Jake. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstentions? Chair votes affirmative, and the conditional approval.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant conditional approval of the condominium conversion.
I'm getting ahead. Sorry.
At 9 Button Drive, map seven, Lot 132-22, Zoned AR1, Brenda Kiss and Doreen Figuerre, owners and applicants in accordance with plans prepared by the debate group incorporated dated May 31st, 2022, last revised January 30th, 2023, with precedent conditions to be fulfilled within two years and prior to plan's signature and general and subsequent conditions of approval to be fulfilled as noted in the staff recommendation memorandum dated April 5th, 2023.
Okay, Al's made the motion for a conditional approval.
Second.
Jake does a second. Any discussion by the board? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And abstentions? Chair votes affirmative, and the motion is conditionally approved. I was getting ahead of myself. I know it has potential to be a lengthy meeting, so thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next we have is a public hearing on an application for a formal review of a subdivision plan and site plan for a 21-unit single detached residential development at 22 Young Road, tax map six, Lot 53, Zoned Residential 3. Edgar and Winifred Pitts are the trustees and owners, and 20 Young Road, tax map six, Lot 58-2, Zoned Residential 3. Cedar Crest Development is the owner and Cedar Crest Development is the applicant. So before we get to this plan, we have to determine if it's, is complete.
Yes, Mr. Chair, there are 10 outstanding checklist items, of which, I should say, I just received a waiver request from the applicant relating to these 10 items, which the applicant has copies of for the board, but before we continue with that, I'd like to just go through each.
Yes, 10 items is very unusual, and I think it would require a careful review by this, this board, so...
So if I could just continue?
Yes.
So given the 10 outstanding checklist items, staff is recommending that the application not be accepted as complete. The items consist of checklist item 2.7, stormwater management report was absent from the form, from the submission. Checklist item 2.8, again, related to the stormwater management report. Checklist item V10, designation of each proposed lot by map and lot numbers as provided by the assessor were absent. Checklist item V19A, location of existing septic systems was absent. Checklist items 8.8c, detention basin outlet structure details absent from the submission. Checklist item 1013d, construction detail for the proposed gas line is absent from the submission. Checklist item 813d, again, related to the construction detail for the proposed gas line. Checklist items 10.9, related to the roadway cross-sections, not indicating the under drains, and checklist item IV.1N, applicant is indicating improvements within the conservation overlay district, specifically on sheet 10, and there's a question of a conditional use permit needing to be required.
Okay, thanks Kelly. And let's go. Number one, what is the reasoning for your waiver?
Mr. Chair, good evening. My name is Jeffrey Brown.
And remember, we have a new statute, so there has to be a reason to approve it and there has to be a reason to reject it. We have all the reasons to reject it right here in front of us. So it's up to you to prove, make the proof.
Very good. I have a waiver letter here that I could pass out, but you just want to go through the waivers first.
We'll go through it. So we're, we're, like this meeting, we're not going to be sitting here and reading it. You should have those in ahead of time.
Yep.
So that we have the information here. If it, if it isn't, that's no, your fault.
Okay. I'll go through it. The stormwater report was submitted, so it says it was absent. Not only that, we've got a letter dated January 18th from StanTech, the peer review The stormwater report was submitted, so it says it was absent. Not only that, we've got a letter dated January eighteenth from Stan Tech, the peer reviewer, since it says right here, item one, stormwater management report. That's what they're reviewing. So we believe that was submitted. That handles item one and two.
When was it submitted?
Was submitted in their letter is dated January eighteenth, so a couple months ago. It was submitted December twelfth, I believe.
Okay, here the stormwater.
Received by the town on December twenty-eighth. Says it was received on the town by December twenty-eighth, so just over three months ago.
Any info on that at all?
My understanding is that the there was an incorrect drainage and stormwater report submitted, and there was a question about the receipt of the stormwater manager report specific to this project.
Okay, so it's incomplete or.
Position is still that, as it states in the memo, that it's not received.
Now, did you meet with staff to go through these?
So the way the process works, we did submit on March sixteenth a formal review, and we did not get anything from staff. It's just your process until today.
It's a process. You also can choose a design review, which you work with staff.
We did do that. We met with them on January third.
Okay, and they told you what to do?
Yep.
Did you do it?
Yep. So what happened is we did submit a report that had a volume that was wrong in October, and then we resubmitted on December twenty-eighth the correct report after, just prior to meeting with staff on January third. So they have had the correct report for since December twenty-eighth, and then I got a review on January eighteenth. It's dated January eighteenth. I didn't get it till the end of January.
That's from Stan Tech.
From Stan Tech, and the town got two copies as well.
John's not here tonight. We just.
As part of the formal submission, a stormwater management report wasn't received.
Oh, okay.
So through the design reprocess, we may have received a stormwater management report, but for the formal submission, which is requires submission of all documentation, we didn't receive a stormwater management report.
Okay.
So you did get one in a design review, but it just was not on the formal submission checklist itself?
Correct.
So you've received one, you've read one. It sounds like it's been conversed about between town staff, Stan Tech, and and our engineers that are here. So you've had one, you've read one. It just was not submitted with our checklist.
Correct.
Okay. The checklist indicated that it was submitted.
Okay.
The one we submitted on March sixteenth. It's, you know, these reports are enormous.
So it sounds to me that obviously there's been conversation about it, and it sounds that both parties, the town and them, are aware of it, but it just is not in the checklist itself. So it's kind of a, it's it's there. Everybody knows about it, but it just did not make it onto the formal submission of the checklist. Obviously, there's more. I think you said that was the first two items, correct?
Yeah, I could go through all of them absolutely.
I think maybe before I keep going on here.
Okay, yeah, I want them to finish first on this. Okay, so we have that information, whether, you know, I have to see it to believe it, so.
Yeah.
Or the staff would have to agree to it.
And I guess.
If it's, you know, a small change, the thing is, if we, you know, waive it, then it could present a problem in the plan, so result continuance of the plan.
Correct. And I guess, you know, what I'm getting at is our town just said they have them. They just weren't on the formal submission of the checklist. So they have them, but it was not in our formal submission, so you know, I would wonder if that's something that we can waive for completeness right now, seeing as that though
It probably could be.
We do have, we do have it. It almost seems like it's a little bit more of a housekeeping item, that everybody knows we have it, but it just wasn't on the formal.
Yeah, it would be just for completeness.
Yeah, yeah.
I think we have to be careful of what we do waive, so.
Yeah.
I think we have to look at each one carefully, because
Yeah.
The other side of it is precedent being established, so.
Yeah, oh, absolutely.
And then, you know, the next plan has is making the same request, so whatever there's going to be a commonality between the two, because they're here, they're seeing what's going on right now with waiving, you know, checklist items. Okay, so number three.
Number three is an interesting one. The lots have to be merged. There are two owners of the property now, and there's a merger process that you have. I think you just went through it. Before we get numbers from the assessors, they have to be merged. And so it's like a chicken and an egg type of thing. We can't get the assessor's number until they merge. We can't merge till we go through the process, so we can't, that's why we're asking for a waiver, because we can't really do it without getting the process moved.
Yep, right here. It's signed.
What it's signed, I'm sorry.
It's a lot line merger.
Oh, okay, so then we meet the checklist item.
So you got that one.
No, that's not for that.
Oh, oh, is it?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I referenced another one. It's just like that, is what I was saying. Yeah, we have two owners that need to get to be one owner before it could be merged. It can't be one owner until the plan's approved. It's just a chicken and the egg type of thing.
You gotta have both of them, because otherwise you have a big mess.
Right. Is that, kind of sounds like a, go through that again. You can't do it until until the, if I just heard you correctly, you can't do it until you get approval. You wouldn't have that anyway.
Correct.
Did I just hear that right?
Yeah, it would be done. We have no, and I will say that my waiver letter does say for purposes of acceptance. It would be done before the project gets recorded at the registry.
What's your waiver letter? Is that what you said you were going to hand out?
Yes, yes.
If you don't mind, could we take a copy of it?
Sure. So that's what I said, it's a chicken before the egg. We can't get the numbers from the assessor till we merge. We can't merge till the project's approved and goes into one ownership. And so it's something we can't do till then. It's a perfect example of why you asked for a waiver.
Yeah.
Does staff agree with that? Chicken and egg.
So what I've seen in these situations is we'll receive the merger request with the submission, and so it gives the opportunity to assign those numbers in advance. That wasn't the case in this instance, but you know, depending on how you look at it, you could view it as a chicken before the egg, but
It's just three of them.
I think in this, as with all the checklist items, as staff, we're required to conduct a review. Part of the review is assessing checklist items and whether or not they've been completed, and then making a recommendation based on that.
Okay, the, what I have in my hand is a request for a waiver for all outstanding checklist items for the purpose of acceptance.
That's that's a blanket thing, which yeah, I think if we disagree with something, then we can't, you know.
Once you do this, that's it.
Yeah. Unless we go item by item.
So, yeah, can we, do you want to start? I mean, let's let them finish here and then out, and then can we go line by line here and?
Well, you gotta remember, we had a lengthy meeting too, so if you want to be here to midnight.
I'm here for the people. I'll be here till four A. M.
Okay, so number three is we gotta get the ownership clarified. Am I correct on that?
Well, it's clarified. There are two owners. They need to become one owner before it merges.
It's, yeah, it's not not official. You don't have the, you don't have the the egg in hand.
Right, and we can't have the egg in hand until the project is approved and land transferred into one owner.
This can't be the first time this.
I was thinking the same thing.
It sounds very, very simple, to be honest with you. I understand the little bit of confusion here, but it's just I have a feeling this would probably be something that would be a waiver request that our staff would recommend the waiver request, much like we do many waiver requests. It's, I understand it. It's it's pretty, you know, they need to get their approval before they do the merger of the land, that it sounds like it must have two different agreements on the merger of land.
Yeah, but Kelly's saying that there is a process that normally happens. It's not a chicken and the egg thing. It's that there is normally X and then Y.
Correct.
It sounds like X didn't happen for Y to take place.
If I can. Sounds like X can't happen.
I mean, Kelly is saying that it does, you know.
There's a process for a purpose. We've we've been in trouble before on things, so it's it's, I hope it proves it's not to get in trouble again on anything.
So I'll ask this question to Kelly. Assuming that we granted that waiver, even though if they did not meet that condition, they could not go forward with the subdivision, correct?
Correct. You, if you were going to waive any of these items, it would be for acceptance purposes only. They still need to fulfill these requirements.
So those requirements are not on the on the plan that we have, so therefore we'd have to continue the plan anyway, so.
Could, could you? To me, a lot of these seem a little bit like, a lot of these kind of seem like housekeeping items. Could it be something that we work our way through our process here and be a planning board and make some decisions, and if we were to approve this, a precedent condition of the approval would be a precedent addition of approval would be that the checklist items are met.
Yeah, I think that's pushing it too far. It's too theoretical, Jake. You know, you're getting at the details of what's here, so.
Yeah. I have a question. You're saying you can't do this until you have both owners become one. Is there any holdback from them doing that? In other words, they're going to put together a thing and one of them's going to buy or sell, or they're going to merge, but it's a legal description of a piece of land. Can they do that?
So currently, we have closed on twenty Young Road. Twenty-two Young Road is the property that is still under agreement with the seller. And the entire contract is based off of approvals of this subdivision. That is the reason why we have not merged. Is that we have not closed on that property because we don't have approvals on that property yet, and that is why we were asking for that as well. And like he said before, these are all things that we want to make, you know, as can as a condition, when I was just asking for tonight for this project to be accepted and heard, so that we can do our homework and come back to you guys again.
Well, my problem is I'm just seeing these waiver requests right here on the screen tonight. No chance to think about anything else or what they are.
With all due respect, when do you ever see a waiver request before tonight?
We don't get the.
We don't get them until we sit down here, so how could you say that?
It's the staff's response is right after that, so we have staff's response. Staff has looked at it. That's one of the problems with a formal submission. You know, if we get it cold turkey, we usually continue the plan, so that we have one, that they correct things, and two, that we have a chance to really review it. You know, we don't do the planning. We judge what's been submitted to us.
But we certainly do the approvals, and that's what we're here for. So I'm just wondering.
Well, that's part of the planning.
What we, what can we work through, you know?
This is not a negotiation process.
We also think if we were to continue to go through these, you guys would also be able to aware, be aware that, you know, we're not asking for things that would not be typical things that you would make as a condition of any sort of an approval for a site or a development like this.
I think what Kelly said is true. We're looking at just waiving for acceptance purposes and that they would still be part of any decision.
Well, the other thing we have to think about as a board is what are we establishing as precedent? Do we just do this to every plan now, Jake?
And does it start the clock ticking as well?
Yeah, it starts the clock ticking as well, and if they don't have it and.
I just, for something as simple as this, right? So, okay, let's continue this and delay it a month. In a month, it's going to be three paragraphs down as a waiver request that staff is going to recommend. Like I said, this is all super run, like to me, it seems, for the most part, what we've gone through so far, one, the first two are a, are a staff has them. They just didn't put them in the final submission, so staff has them. They've seen them. It's not like staff hasn't had them and seen them, you know, it's all there.
But that's why they're making the recommendation to us, Jake. They have seen them.
Correct, and it is just that, a recommendation.
And you can always come in before the plan and work with, you know, sit down with staff to go over it, you know, it's not necessarily cold turkey.
We've done that twice.
We did that.
So, I mean, plans have been submitted. They're here.
I'd like to hear the rest of the checklist, so.
So the next one is five nineteen, five nineteen, six nineteen C, which is location of existing septic systems. The wells are shown because the wells are seen by the surveyors. The septic systems are not. There's no records of them. These are the existing septic systems for the two existing properties. They're both going to be raised and removed, and the septic system is abandoned anyway, and we don't know where they are, so that's why they're not shown. They're underground somewhere.
Well, even, in any case, we have the waiver request, but what concerns me is there's a note here that says the staff has not had time to work through these waiver requests and and make a recommendation of the board.
It's just that. It's a recommendation. Can't we, as a board, exercise a little bit of forward thinking here?
You're gonna have specific reasons, Jake, and if you want to waive anything, you're the ones that are going to have to come up with the specific reasons that are legal.
So the specific reason for the first two is town has it and they've looked at it. It's just not in the formal submission. To me, it seems like a very simple housekeeping item, that's all.
So.
I'd like Kelly to explain.
The board has the ability to go against staff's recommendation. That's, there's no legality issue with that. The board has the ability to grant waivers. If you're going to do that in this instance, I would recommend it be for acceptance purposes only, so we ensure we capture these items. With regard to the stormwater management report, the issue staff has with it not being submitted as part of the formal submission is we can't confirm that the information in the stormwater report is consistent with the most recent plan set. So we have a design review application that we'd been reviewing, and a stormwater management report associated with that design review application. We received a formal application, which is a revision of the design review application, and therefore we should have received a revised stormwater management report. So that's where the concern lies. It's not so much that we have it and we looked at it and we're good. It's just that we don't have a formal one. There's a question about whether or not it's consistent with the updated plan set. I'm not saying that it's not consistent. I'm just saying that we have not been able to evaluate that yet.
So how do we get through that tonight?
Well, I could say that it is. That's easy enough.
Yeah, without having to do this again thirty days from now, how do we get through that tonight?
Well, I think it's better to wait and have the real information and not shoot from the hip, Jake.
If there was an inconsistency between what they submitted in design and what they submit in formal, even if we waive that, staff still has an opportunity to come back on the developer and say it doesn't meet X, Y, and Z?
Yes, we can inform them that it's not meeting a regulation or requirement. I don't know, you know, I don't know what magnitude that may be, and if it's something that is significant enough to cause additional issues. I don't know. I haven't reviewed the report, nor do I even fully review the reports. It's an engineering item, but I'll say again, the board has the ability to make its own decisions with regard to waiver requests in the application. Staff's recommendation is that these items weren't provided, and so it's not a complete application at this time.
Well, you said you got it, but you just haven't had the time to review it.
No, I don't have
Formal?
A formal, I don't have a stormwater management report associated with the formal submission.
Is there a formal storm management report?
It was submitted. It's the same thing. Remember, it's this thick, and I guess if you want to place blame, it would be on me not making another copy of the same exact report, two copies, just to submit it at the same time. But it was submitted. The town has it. I'm telling you, it's the same report, and I we didn't get this memo until you got this memo, which is tonight. If I got this memo, and I'm not putting anybody, it's the process that you.
It's the process.
If I got it before, I would have been able to answer the question, but.
If it does design review, you know, it would, you know, we'd have all the information.
And we did go to design review.
But that's that's your decision.
Understood, but we just got this today too, so it's hard to respond to something that we just got today, but that's your process. And I'm saying it's the same report. You'll get that verified.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it's an ideal process, but I was just trying to figure out how long it's been in staff's hands for.
But actually, what you're saying is you made a change, and part of the change could affect that. But actually, what you're saying is you made a change, and part of the change could affect that wastewater, the.
No, I did not, no.
What did you say?
The December twenty-eighth report that's been in the town since December twenty-eighth, that report is still valid.
That is still valid, so you should have put it with the formal request or review, you know what I'm saying?
I should have made another two copies, I, I get that, that's why I just said, I, I should have made another two giant copies and wasted all that paper, but I should have done that, and we wouldn't be having to talk about it.
Those are regulations, and that's why we're here tonight, because you didn't do that.
But we, we did say in the checklist that it's there, so the checklist itself said it was there. You follow me? So, I mean, I know I'm asking for a waiver of the checklist, but the checklist did say the report was there.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd wanna, I'd wanna see it in hand and staff have it, and staff approve it. I'd be more comfortable that way.
It, it's, it's, I guess you could blame it on the process, the fact that we all got this memo today, and that's how you do things here in London area, I get that, but.
Other people do the process fine, you know, you're, you're, you're one of the exceptions. There are always exceptions.
Can I talk for a quick second, Mr. Chair?
What do you got, speech to say, Jake?
Not, not much of a speech, just conversation.
You've done enough talking already, I think.
And I'm gonna keep going, trust me. So, I think that we know we have discussed it this board before, and we are awaiting a review of our process. So I think we know that we are looking to change our process.
That hasn't happened yet.
I, I agree with you, but I think this is a perfect case in point of what is wrong.
There are some perfect cases in point, but, uh, this is not the time to discuss our procedures and how we're gonna do it.
I would like to see this.
We, we have to work with what we got right now.
That's what I'm trying to do, work with what we got, instead of just continuing it because staff hasn't turned, because we haven't turned it into a requested waiver yet that we're gonna approve anyway.
So, let's just use the process that we have in front of us. Let's just make a motion and see if we have support on the board to use our brains instead of just following blindly.
Um, yeah, let me think about how I wanna word this, yeah.
I think you just take it one checklist item at a time. That way, everybody has to put their name to what they do or do not want to support.
Yep. So, in that, I think we're at number four. Let's go through number ten, to number ten, let's get through all these, hear what you have to say, and then.
Uh, uh, we're, we're number four, Jake.
I think we're on number four, correct?
Yeah, yeah. Location of existing septic systems was absent per sections, so forth.
And just to reiterate before we interrupted that or I started talking, I have a tendency to.
Think if we stick to this, Jake, we get through quicker.
Yeah, oh, I know. You said you don't know where the location of the septic system is, right?
It's a checklist requirement, but it's impossible for us to know where they are.
So that's a checklist requirement that is, was impossible for them to figure out, so would that ultimately come as a waiver for this on their?
Why is it impossible?
It's, 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 I mean, the only thing I could say, we could get a general direction, like anybody's house, you go in the basement and see which direction the pipe's leaving, but that doesn't show us where the septic system is.
I'm sure there's ways of detecting what's under, underground.
Yeah, we could do an infrared radar and so forth. What's that?
You're looking for the septic?
Septic system, that's a tank, the piping, the whole bit. If there even, if there even is, is one, you know, these are old houses, it could be a cesspool.
Well, at least there's some, some way of ma- mapping it and estimating it, and, uh, you get an engineer out there.
Don't you just take a, a backhoe and, and follow the pipe?
They can't do that yet.
Yeah, they don't own the land.
There's people that.
There's people living there.
And they're pulling up the septic system anyways.
All these are gonna be abandoned anyway, so they have no real import onto the plan itself.
I have a question for you. If you had this a week ago or whatever, would you be requesting a waiver from the board tonight?
Well, I'll tell you what we would have done. If we had this, and we did have the comment a while ago, if I knew it was going to be a checklist item to be accepted or not, I probably would have gone out there and tried to find it, I guess, by probing, but we're not gonna find it by probing either. That, that's the only thing I would do. Of course, the ground's frozen and all that, but there's nothing that really, that we can do other than look at records of the town hall or ask the people that pumped it and.
Or request a waiver.
Or request a waiver, which is what we're here.
Or you would be here requesting a waiver.
And if it was, and if it was a big deal, like, we needed to use it or continue to use it, then it would be more important, but we're not planning on using either one of the septic systems.
So, that would be a waiver request, so I guess what I'm getting at is, let's go through a waiver request process here, or we can take this blanket waiver of everything.
I think it'd be better to just do it.
But I'd say go one by one.
Let's move on to number five.
All right. Number five and six is the town has a detention base and outlet structure that's different than my, my company's outlet structure. There is an outlet structure on the plan, so where it says it's absent, that's not true. The request from the review from the town was that you, we use their outlet structure. That's different from any other town or any, any other place that I've done, because it's my stamp, but we've agreed to use their outlet structure, the town's outlet structure. So we will do this, uh, we don't think it's, it, it's not, it's definitely not absent, and the checklist item says it's absent, and it's not absent. I could tell you what page to go to and you could see it.
It's not the town standard, is why. We're viewing it as not part of the submitted checklist items.
But it gets more complicated than that, because the town standard, it's a recommendation, it's not a requirement. We've agreed to accept the recommendation of the STAN-TEC, so we'll do it as a recommendation, but it's, we definitely show an outlet structure. It's not absent, and they'd ask, they asked us to change it, and we will agree to change it, but it's definitely not absent.
Okay, four, five, six.
Four, five and six are the same.
Five and six are the same thing.
Seven, this is an interesting one. Now you got interesting. The gas company, we don't design the gas lines and details, the gas company does, Liberty Utilities. So we asked them back in March, uh, to give us the details of construction, and they responded back to us. It says, "We have never been asked this from the Town of London area before for projects that are up for planning board consideration. We do not have a finalized plan set yet because we don't have an agreement. Engineering and construction put together a final plan set once the agreement has been submitted. We have to work with the Town of London several, several times, and this has never been an ask from London every T O T O board before." And then she goes through some details, details I can share with you at this time, and we plan to tap into the eight-inch high-pressure gas line number one oh two and install two-inch high-pressure down Young Road, blah, blah, blah. But the actual detail itself is not provided by Liberty Utilities, and it's their detail, not ours, and they won't do it until the plan's approved and they get to design it themselves. So, it's another sort of chicken and the egg, and it's definitely not anything that my office does, it's design gas lines.
Is there a approximate location where the gas line would go?
Yes, and that's shown, yes. That is shown, because they told us where it's gonna go, so we put it on the plan.
And do they work with the town?
Once the plans are approved, we, the developer will take the plans and give them to Liberty Utilities. We usually have to give them a CAD file as part of that, after it's approved, and then they design the actual details, which is what they're asking for here. At that point, it's way before then. And I, again, I don't know why this hasn't come up before, because it's, somebody else asked me today, why wouldn't that be happening all the time? And I guess it would somehow.
This is the first time I can.
Yeah, exactly, we're, we're stuck in this conundrum here.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's kind of out of your control, because it's something that's being provided for by a utility.
Right.
And that's where I think the town needs to be flexible and offer waivers and things, because these utilities aren't accustomed to it, and they're not gonna put the time and, and, and money into do it until they know that they're gonna have customers. So that's something you, you definitely gotta work with.
Staff has not stated that a waiver cannot be requested from this.
Okay.
So.
That's good, so you work with them on that.
Okay.
We ready for the next one?
Eight.
Yes.
Eight is the same as seven.
Okay, same thing. Hey, nine.
Nine, the roadway cross section doing, indicate the underdrains. We have a note on the plan that indicates, it says that with the certain cuts that you put underdrains in, but they want us to see, show the exact locations of the underdrains. It's just a line on a plan showing where this underdrain's gonna be, it's just a small section. Again, we have no problem being, this is a condition, and it is on the plan, uh, it's just not shown on the cross-sections where they go.
Okay.
It is on the plan and profile sheets. Next, uh, the C U P. So we've met with conservation twice on this. We've, it's somewhat complicated issue, there is a part of a, there's a wetland on our land that's isolated, that's connected to a bigger wetland through a pipe, and they want us to reconnect that wetland, the small little isolated wetland, to the bigger wetland that was subdivided off, some subdivided, broken off when they built the driveway. We agreed to do that, and we met with them twice on that. The question is, when do we do that? And they agreed, conservation, that we can do it afterwards, they don't really care when. So we want to do our work first, and then do this as a phase two, completely independent. So we have a sheet in the plan set that shows that, that it's to be done separately, as a separate C U P after the fact, after the phase one is done. So we are ask, we are going to ask for a C U P, but not now, and conservation's okay with that.
CUPs we do either with the plan or before the plan.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair.
We do the CUPs either before the plan or with the plan.
But this is a separate C U P at the conservation's request, in other words, we don't need to do that C U P. They asked us to rip up the pipe, rip up the driveway, we wanted to keep it and use it as access, another access point. They said, "Would rather you rip up the pipe, rip up the driveway, you don't have any use for this anyway," and we agreed to do that. But we want to do it separately, it's got nothing to do with the plan. Then they said, "Well, we should show it on the plan so you know what's coming," somebody knows what's coming, so we showed it on the plan, and then STAN-TEC says, and we showed it on the plan, it's a future phase, a future C U P, and STAN-TEC says that we didn't apply for it. We're not going to apply for it until the future.
But that, it sounds like it would be a condition of the plan.
It would be a condition of the plan, that we apply for it in the future, we have no problem with that.
Yeah, so the plan wouldn't be approved until you get the C U P?
No.
Uh, yes. If it's a condition of the plan, then the plan is not approved.
As a second, as a second phase, though.
It's conditional approved, but you don't get a signed plan until it's done.
But we're saying we want to do it like two years from now, and conservation has no problem doing that two years from now.
It means your plan would be waiting for two years to get to.
No, they're, they're asking to phase it, much like we phase roadways and finish paving on block section.
That'd be, that'd be up for the discussion at the time. I think we're, I guess, we've got some conjecture going here.
Well, I do think it's kind of bureaucracy getting in the way of goodwill.
If.
They're, they're, they're saying that they will do this, they're working with the, the conservation, uh, this board, but they want to get their subdivision out of the way, and they're doing this as, is it, is it?
It's not required for the subdivision.
It is not a requirement of subdivision, it's a request of us, and they're saying they'll do it, but they will do it further down the road on their terms, after it sounds like you've gotten your access.
It'd have to be, it'd have to be.
I think I could help clarify a little bit, so. Correct, the concert, the applicant has worked with the Conservation Commission to remove this area in order to connect the wetlands, which is great. On the subdivision plan, it shows just that. It also shows impacts to the Conservation overlay district for which we require a conditional use permit. So since the plans before you or before staff show that occurring, we have to say you need a conditional use permit. If you approve the plan showing that area, the CO district, being disturbed or impacted, and it doesn't have a C U P, that's not meeting the regulations. So that's the reasoning for getting the C U P first.
Yes, that's how it's usually.
For, with, with the approval.
That, that's how it's usually done, because I know we've had, you know, promises way in the past. Plan gets approved, then they don't do them. Okay, so we've got ten, so, uh, what is the board's decision?
Can I ask a question before we?
Oh, certainly.
Vote on that? So, if the board went ahead and approved the waivers, that I won't be the next step tonight, would we be presented with a plan for our approval?
Yes.
So if.
Because I know they're asking for waivers against the plans as well.
Yes, it would be going right to the plan.
You would need just, it would be waived for acceptance purposes only. I just want to make sure we're very clear about that. And then, at that point, if that's how the board votes, you can proceed with the application itself.
You can proceed with the plan, so, that, so that, so if they're all were, you know, had a waiver, you know, for discussion purposes only, then, uh, you know, we would get into the plan itself. So it would start, you know, sixty-five day time clock, it's not, it's put the public hearing on it, and, uh.
No, because there's waivers being asked against the plans as well, if I'm not mistaken, if I'm correct.
Correct.
And the staff is recommending that we don't act on those waivers tonight as well. So, my, my concern is if we accept the plan as complete and we don't approve the plan, if the plan gets continued, what have we bought? We haven't bought anything. They have time to come back with a complete plan in a month. That, that, that's my trait of thought.
Because the waivers they're asking for are somewhat significant, and, you know, and the staff again is asking for more time to evaluate what they are. Yeah, either way, they're gonna be back for continuance anyway.
The reason that we state not to act on the other waivers
Is you don't act on the acceptance.
Is because we're stating not to act on acceptance.
Correct.
So we're not, we're not gonna recommend you act on the, the waivers, since we're saying, we're recommending you shouldn't accept it.
If we were to maybe waive the acceptance here and got to waivers, could staff talk on the waivers? Does staff have sufficient information about?
Uh, I could probably speak to some, but there are some specific engineering waivers that I don't have a, uh, comment, if you will, at this time on.
I'd feel more, I'd feel more comfortable, um, having the engineer discuss this also, you know, he's not here tonight, so I.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I mean, it would be continued anyway, I mean, I don't, I, I want answers, and I'm not, not satisfied with what I've, I've heard. I want to be able to be satisfied.
So it. Just that, what's the board's general feeling on waiving acceptance upon?
Make a motion, Jake.
Well, I'm looking for a general feeling before I make a motion. I'll make a motion if you'd like.
My concern is not necessarily for this, because it, it does sound fairly straightforward, but setting a precedent of proactively accepting waivers without having them. You know, basically just saying, "Yeah, we're just, you know, we're, we're just accepting all the waivers without having what we need." And then the next person comes through and says, "Well, you've already accepted all the waivers proactively on this job, now what about my job?"
And my concern is, in terms of the overall process to get the plan approved, I don't think it's buying any time to approve those waivers tonight. I don't either.
Mr. Chair, make a motion to waive checklist item two dot seven and eleven dot two. A stormwater management report was absent from submission per section three dot zero seven, site regulation on items two dot seven and X dot I dot two. The site plan application checklist, make a motion to waive this for acceptance.
Second.
Question by, uh.
Ask a question.
Yes, I was gonna go into the discussion once I.
Okay, sorry, sorry.
Yeah, so Bruce has made the motion, Jake has done the second, so discussion for the board.
That was really quick. Which numbers of those that you're?
We're just gonna go one by, one by one, so the first one. So, under the staff recommendation for completeness, completeness, number one, checklist item two dot seven, so the first one.
Discussion one. So if, so why don't we just take them as a group, if we don't allow one?
Put them all out.
It's either all or nothing, isn't it, in my mind?
Yeah, yeah, I would, I would think a motion to accept, they've made a request for ten of them. I think the motion would be to accept all, all ten, you know, for, uh, because if one doesn't get accepted, then it's still.
Again, I, I was trying to go one by one, because it would.
Yeah, okay, as soon as one, one.
One doesn't, you know, we could get to five, and we could be all in favor of the first four, and then we get to five, and it doesn't, we'd stop, and that would be the end of that.
Yeah, might as well just try, I think, all, all at once, if that flies.
So can I make a motion to waive all of them, all of the checklist items for our checklist here?
Can the reason, Jake?
You have a motion on the table?
They have to withdraw the previous motion.
I would need to either make a friendly amendment or withdraw.
Make a friendly amendment.
Please withdraw your motion if you're gonna make a motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Start again, yeah, it, it keeps it. It, it keeps it clean for everyone to understand.
Keeps it legal.
So I'll make a waiver to, uh...
Make a motion.
I'll make, yeah. I'll make a motion to waive any of the current outstanding checklist items for purposes of acceptance only.
Yeah, but motion by Jake. Do I have a second? There's no second.
Bruce just said second.
Oh, oh, your second, okay.
Yeah, I'll put my name on that.
I was starting again. Okay, motion by Jake, second by Bruce, to waive the, the 10 for acceptance purposes only. Any discussion by the board? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Or abstain.
And abstentions, Johnny abstains two, two yes, one abstention, and then five, motion fails. So it has not been accepted as complete and, uh...
Mr. Chair.
Before I go, I just want to...
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to continue the public hearing to May 10th, 2023, to allow time for staff and the applicant to work through outstanding review comments.
Okay, motion by Al, do I have a second?
Question.
I'd like a second for...
Second.
Second by Roger. Okay, Jake, we have a discussion now.
Um, would staff feel like they've got enough to put this on, or would staff feel like there's enough time to get through this to put it on next week's meeting as opposed to a month from now?
Fairly busy, well, not busy, but we do have a presentation by Woodmont, uh, their annual report.
It can't be any busier than tonight.
Uh, well, that's, that'll definitely be more than an hour, you know, and then we have a, a continued plan to hear. And I think that is all, but Kelly wants to start talking about, you know, what you've been talking about, Jake, so...
I guess I would look for, since I asked staff, I would look for staff's opinion on it.
So the decision is up to the board and I would say the applicant because there are items that the applicant needs to address. I don't know if they have enough time to address the items in a week, less than a week.
We could do it. We, we feel very confident that we could be back here in a week with every, every one of these things addressed.
Well...
As much as we can.
We're still gonna ask for the gas line waiver. I mean, we're still gonna have to ask the merger waiver, so the, the ones that we can't do, we'll still be asking for. But they'll be in formal form. The good news is you'll have it in formal form, you'll understand why, we don't have to talk about it again. And so we could just skip quickly through those.
Well, you'd be put on at the end of the meeting, so it could be, it could be lengthy.
That's fine.
Well, is staff gonna be able to do it?
If they, if they're saying they have it on their end, does staff have it on their end? On your end?
I'm not the only reviewer, but...
As we've said before, we've, I mean, we have this information. We have had two, two design review committee meetings, like we, we've, we've done this work, this, if we can have a week, we feel confident that we can get it done with staff.
The only thing I'm gonna say, as an applicant in front of the board, that I took three plans off tonight. It was done on the courtesy of the board and the recommendation by staff to shorten the meeting, so extend it. So I didn't realize that half these other plans were gonna have so many challenges, but, yeah, well, that's a little ad libit.
When I made the comment about the length of the agenda, I made that to all applicants and advised them if they wanted to continue, they could.
No, but I'm saying that...
He's saying he wouldn't continue if he knew that, yeah.
So if our policy is to have it on the first Wednesday of the month, we should have it on the first Wednesday, Wednesday of the month.
That is our standard practice and it's up to the board what you want to, how you want to vote. There's a motion on the table to continue it to make that.
Because our first, first meeting of the month, this is in our rules of procedure and everything, our new plans and then continued plans is the second meeting of the month. And that's for conceptuals and also, you know, looking at, you know, changes in our rules and regulations and any zoning, recommended zoning amendments.
We're gonna need a lot of time for that process change discussion.
Yeah. Well, that was just, we're in conversation, so there is a motion, I think it was for the 5th of next month. What was it?
10th, May 10th.
10th.
Second.
That's what normally continues.
So I think it was already seconded. I just created conversation to see if we could do it next week. The applicant's confident they could do it next week, but...
Okay, any further discussion for the board on the continuance? I don't see...
Correct.
All those in favor of continuance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Opposed. I mean, abstaining. I don't agree with continuing because I wanted to...
I don't either, so I guess I would abstain as well.
Okay, so, uh, let's see, six, six yes to continue, two abstain. And motion carries in this plan. The application for a formal review of subdivision and site plan for a 21-unit, single detached residential development, 22 Young Road, tax map 6, lot 53, zone residential 3, Edgar and Winifred Pritz, uh, the trustees and the owners, and 20 Young Road, tax map 6, lot 58 dash 2, zone residential 3, Cedar Crest Development, the owner and Cedar Crest Development, as the applicant, is continued to the 10th of May, 2023, at 7:00 PM, right here.
Thank you, guys.
That's the only official notice for this. Okay, next we have a public hearing on an application for a formal review of a subdivision plan to divide one lot into two. 55 Pettingill Road, tax map 14, lot 49 dash 3, Zone Gateway Business District, One Pettingill Road Realty LLC is the owner and the applicant, and we have to determine completeness.
Just wait a second till everybody gets out of here, Mr. Chair.
Yes, yeah, I'm not gonna go any further till... It's lightening the load anyway. Guess they don't want to stay for the rest of it. See some familiar faces, so...
Can we leave?
I'll wait for, for Kelly to get... So completeness, yeah.
Mr. Chair, there are 11 outstanding checklist items and no waivers with justification have been requested at this time for these outstanding checklist items and staff is recommending the application not be accepted as complete.
Okay, staff does not recommend completeness, so...
So it sounds like we're in the same boat as we were five seconds ago.
Yep, yep. So do you want to continue it the same way or do you want to be a little more efficient about it?
I, I think I'd like to be more efficient about it and hear from the people who have come tonight.
I, I think we've got some, some, some people here that would want to talk about completeness. So Kevin, you could come identify yourself for our records, please, and...
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd also like to welcome Bob Duval from TF Moran. Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, for the record, my name is Kevin Smith, you may remember me, uh, and it's a pleasure to...
You're very memorable, Kevin.
Well, it's a pleasure to see all of you this evening. Hopefully that was meant in a good way, aren't we?
Yes. It's only the positive.
Thank you. Uh, and I'm here tonight in a capacity as a consultant on this particular subdivision. So this is just a subdivision application, this is not a site plan application. Just on background, 55 Pettingill Road is approximately 21 acres, zoned industrial in the Gateway Business District, up and around the airport. And this is a subdivision application to divide the 21 acres into both 4 and 17 acres. The current owners of the property would retain the four acres of ownership and the 17-acre subdivision is going to help facilitate what'll be a multimillion dollar manufacturing development, approximately 200 square feet at full buildout with 500 employees. You will be seeing the site plan for that development hopefully very soon. However, that site plan is contingent upon this subdivision taking place. It's a contingency of the, the PNS. And the developer for this has extremely tight timeframes, which is why we submitted for formal application when we did to bring it to the planning board this evening. And while there are outstanding, uh, comments on the application, um, we are looking for waivers this evening and Bob will walk you through them. Most of them are technical in nature, which we can happily give to the staff subsequent to this meeting upon approval as a condition of approval. The rest of them are requirements of the actual site plan application. And so there are things that you will see when the site plan comes in and really are non-germain to the subdivision application. And so with that, I will turn it over to Bob.
Thank you, Kevin. My name is Bob Duval. I'm chief engineer of TF Moran and here on behalf of the, of the applicant. Thank you. And I, I just, according to the practice that was just established in the previous application, I'll just quickly go through each of the items and, and explain...
That was a preview.
It was fascinating. Item number one, the applicant's submitted topographic plans are at a scale of 1 to 50 versus 1 to 40. And the simple reason we did that is because it's all vacant land and, of course, you have the, the plans in your packet and it fits nicely on two sheets at 50 scale, but it would require four sheets at 40 scale. And there's no detailed, in fact, there's no design on this. This is all existing conditions. So we thought it was appropriate to just put it on two sheets rather than four. But we'd be happy to put it on four sheets for the final, as a condition of approval if, if that, if staff feels that we should do that. Item number two, the address of the applicant is not shown in the title block, however it is shown in note one, his owner of record as 169 Nottingham Road, Deerfield, so it is on the plan. Number three, the proposed use in the notes was absent from the submission per section, et cetera. It's vacant land and, you know, it's patently vacant land. We didn't, so basically the answer is there's no use on the property. Number four, the zoning of the abutters was absent. It's all Gateway Business. The property itself and all the abutters are Gateway Business District. There's no differentiation or, or analysis that would be required there. The owner's signature was absent from the boundary plans. That's item number five. Actually included in the application was an affidavit giving us authority to sign on behalf of all, you know, land use approvals on behalf of the owner. And actually, the TFM signature is on the plan under the survey or certification, so there's really no need to get the owner's signature since we were acting as the applicant and the, and the signature is on the, in fact, there's a signature and a stamp on the plan. So I, I think it's just, it's moot. And that, that authority letter is in the back. Number seven in this, actually number six, seven, eight, um, 10, six, seven, eight and 10 are all about utility clearance letters. And as was just discussed at length in the previous application, there, there, there are no proposed services shown on this plan because it's simply a subdivision plan establishing the lot that's going to be coming before you shortly as a site plan application. There's no design of the, of the structure itself, there's no design of the site, there's no design of the utilities. In fact, the loads of the proposed building are not even known in terms of the size of the sewer, the size of the water, the size of the gas, et cetera. So it's really not appropriate and the, and the items are unknown to be shown at this time on this subdivision plan. And I also should say parenthetically that the subdivision regulations are clearly designed around a typical residential subdivision, which was the case in the prior application, which, you know, has a road associated with it. You build the road, it establishes frontage, you, you show the lots and then you show how the lots are, you know, are served by water and have an appropriate driveway and so forth, which really doesn't apply here. It's an industrial subdivision, just taking a 21-acre lot, making a 16-acre lot for use as a site plan application with a four-acre remainder. Uh, you know, all the zoning criteria are complied with and no waivers of zoning criteria are needed. So the last couple items, number nine, similar to the utilities, a proposed driveway to serve each lot is absent. We don't know where the driveways are gonna go yet. That's going to be a function of the...
This is just a simple subdivision, vacant property.
Correct.
It'll be two lots of vacant property.
Exactly. Existing lots and there's, there's no, there is no design of a driveway at this point. Of course, when it comes forward, it would have sightlines and all the requirements of a site plan, but not for this subdivision plan. And lastly, item 11, the same thing. We don't know what the traffic is going to be from this site plan at the time. A traffic impact analysis, which would be appropriate for a subdivision that showed 10 lots, perhaps is not really appropriate when we don't know exactly what's being built and what size and so forth. So that's why we're, we're asking that this be accepted because there's really no, no waivers, if you will, that require any deliberation from the board. So we're hoping the board can accept this so that their project can move ahead to the site plan. Okay. Again, staff has not, not made any recommendations. This is definitely different from what we had from the previous plan. But I'll, I'll go through the board for their, their input. Ian?
We're not going to staff.
Just on acceptance.
Okay. We're not discussing it with staff?
We could discuss with staff, yes. Uh, Kelly, Kelly's already, you know, made the recommendation that...
I can add a couple more points if you'd like.
Certainly, certainly. I'm sorry if I, I, I missed it.
Not at all. I just wanted to point out that staff has recommended this not be accepted as complete, but perhaps, maybe to expedite this a little bit, you essentially have, you have a few options as a board. You can not accept it as complete per staff's recommendation. You can accept it as complete. You can waive all of the checklist items for acceptance purposes only. And that's about it. Aside from that, I don't see any other action for the board to take.
Okay. Would have any, any input?
Mr. Chair, in, in the effort of expedience, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application as complete with all 11 checklist items being waived for completeness.
Okay, and the reason?
The reason, as stated by the applicant, that many of these items don't perfectly fit into our, uh, site plan.
I think, as he mentioned, this is not a subdivision for residential...
Correct, it's an industrial subdivision.
Yeah.
And many of these items don't, don't apply.
You're subdividing an empty piece of land...
Right.
To lots of an empty piece of land.
I don't necessarily need a traffic analysis on an empty piece of land going to an empty piece of land.
There's, there's literally no way of...
It's, it's all theoretical, yeah.
Do you need a title block or anything?
We, as I've mentioned, I would, if you're going to waive checklist items, please waive them for acceptance purposes only so they can still be fulfilled.
Sorry, that's what I was doing.
Or be determined not applicable or be waived at a later time.
Okay, I'd like to waive all 11 checklist items for purposes of acceptance that...
Yes, yeah.
Second.
I mean, I read into it for...
Sorry, I left a little ambiguous there, ambiguousness there.
Okay, do I have a second for the motion?
Second.
Second by Jake.
Discussion.
Discussion. Okay, Lynn?
So there's also talk about the design review items in this memo and specifically, can you look at item number one and what that means and how that affects the application and the waivers we're talking about?
Um, in fact, there is a hundred foot of, of lot line length between the proposed lots in the, in the cul-de-sac. And it was specifically made 100 feet to comply with that regulation. I'm not sure the comment is accurate. There's 100 feet of, of frontage there, which provides for adequate driveway, uh, design and, and the adequate separation between the lots.
And do you know what they're talking about, Kelly, with the, when they talk about the angle, they're talking to two, two items?
This right here? This is the line?
Yep.
I don't know if you can see, and this jack, this about 50 feet.
So my question is, just based on their comments, does it require any change to the plan, however minor?
Staff's view would be that it needs to come into compliance with the regulation. So, so yes, changing that lot line to comply per our regulation and upon review.
So theoretically, if, if we move for acceptance of the, of the plan tonight, we're not accepting the plan that's presented to us. the plan that's presented to us.
So what, you're accepting for completeness.
Yeah.
You'll need a separate motion if you're talking about a conditional approval or any type of approval of the plan before you. Typically, we do conditional approvals to capture any outstanding design review items. That's where this item would be captured.
Okay, so that would be the next step of the process?
Yep.
Well, I'd like to point out to the board that no waivers with justification have been requested.
So why would we even talk about things that we have no waiver requests for? And are we going to do that from now on for every single applicant that comes in that has no waiver request?
Yeah, we do need that in writing.
We're talking about item one, is that correct?
What the board's willing to do for.
Talking about checklist.
Pretty much, at least to get in writing what you told us.
We have notes from the meeting, don't we?
Yeah. In our, we're happy to provide it in writing, assuming the board was able to approve it. Obviously, when we don't get the memo, not having the memo until the night of the meeting, we're not able to put in writing what the waiver requests are. But we're happy to do that subsequent to this meeting afterwards.
Okay, I mean, we've, we've heard everything, but actually, you know, waiver requests are required in, in writing.
And to grant waiver requests. From our attorney's advice, we need to articulate why, and it has to be a written response. So we do need an official waiver request.
If we're talking about number one, I'm a little confused because I do believe we do have the 100-foot lot line length and substantially perpendicular, I suppose, is.
I think we're still talking about checklist. You have a motion on the table.
Yeah.
To waive the checklist items for acceptance purposes only.
Can we waive them to just accept the application so we can talk about the application?
No, you can't talk about it till you've determined completeness, either accept it as complete or not. It's, it's not complete, so.
Go ahead. You look like you have something you want to say. Go ahead.
If we haven't received the request, how do we know this is the complete list?
The board has the ability to waive checklist items for acceptance. I would, if you're going to do that, it should be for acceptance purposes only.
Yeah. And that's what the motion is for?
That's within the board's jurisdiction to do.
Well, within what we can do as a board is waive the checklist item, is what I've been, what we've been asking.
I mean, we.
So who created?
Without the formal request? Who created the list of waivers or the checklist?
These are not waivers. They're checklist items.
Checklist items, okay.
That was created by staff.
Yeah, that's from our side. Yeah. So we get the staff's list of what is needed to determine completeness.
It, it, I'm just shaking my head here because I'll give you a perfect example of checklist item one. I can't tell you how many times I've seen that come to us as a waiver instead of a checklist item that is always recommended by staff. So can we?
Well, let's.
Exercise our ability here a little bit to make some decisions on our own without something on a piece of paper that says, staff recommends this.
Well, the motion on the floor is all 11.
Correct.
So we're not talking about individual ones.
I know, but I'm just giving you a perfect example here.
So, I mean, if you don't like the motion that is, is made, you know, when we go to vote, you can vote it down.
Jake, I think, I think the difference is in the other ones, waiver requests that's made, they're saying it as opposed to no.
Yes.
I, I absolutely agree with you.
Instead of it being checklist items, it's going to be a waiver request. So we know that. We're aware of that. So can we accept this as complete?
We have to vote.
We have to vote. And then.
Yeah.
Do you have a?
I have a question. This is only pertaining to the subdividing these two things.
These two empty lots.
That's right. So when we decide to fill them up with something, they're going to have to come back with a site plan.
It's going to be a site plan.
And everything.
That's where we, that has the meat and potatoes of what's going to happen there. Right now, we don't know what's going to happen there. There's just going to be two more, two lots of vacant land instead of one lot of vacant land.
If I could clarify, Mr. Chair, maybe you would help the board understand typically in a site plan, the subdivision plan, if there is one, accompanies the site plan. So, you know, you understand both and everything is.
Usually, we get them to.
You get them in front of you at the same time. The peculiarity of this was, as Kevin pointed out, the PNS itself required this be approved before they would move ahead with the transaction.
That sounds strikingly similar.
Yeah.
And again, my, my point being made is they're going to have to come back for anything. These will not affect anything that happens in the future.
Correct.
Only this particular thing. Okay, I'm ready to vote.
Okay, any further discussion? Sign on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nays. Chair votes affirmative, motion carries. So the plan has been accepted as, you know, just for, you know, completeness purposes, those waivers. So we'll, we'll get to the, the plan itself. So actually, what this does, it starts the public hearing. It starts a 65-day timeframe in which this board has to render a decision.
Understood.
So you're on the floor, Bob.
I think we've already substantively discussed what's being presented to the board tonight. It's a simple subdivision application of a 21-acre lot and a two lots.
We can make things complex when we don't need to.
Certainly, and I try to make it simple.
Anything with government becomes overly complex. You have so many people to deal with.
Right. So anyway, it's, it's a two-lot subdivision. It's an industrial subdivision. There will be a site plan to follow on the larger lot, perhaps not for a while on the smaller lot. It remains to be seen. The smaller lot is being retained by the current owner. The larger lot is being sold to a, to the entity that Kevin alluded to, a major manufacturing entity. There's really no waivers. The frontage is adequate. The zoning is adequate. The setbacks are, are shown and, and of course, don't apply until you actually try to put something there. All utilities are available on two sides of the lot, both along the entire frontage of Pettingill Road and also around the top of the cul-de-sac on the, on the 100-foot lot line between the proposed four-acre lot and the large lot. So we think everything that is referred to in, in the, in the, in the staff's recommendations will either be, is either on the plan now or will be provided in the site plan that will follow this application or will be a matter of separate approval by this board. If you have any specific questions about any of these items, including the design review items, which I didn't go through yet, so maybe I should.
Yes.
Item one, I'm a little confused because, you know, it was our intent to comply with the 100-foot distance to the extent that it doesn't and it's, you know, a fraction off. Or if the line needs to be made more substantially perpendicular, we can do that as a condition of approval. It, it will not affect any of the purposes of this subdivision. But I also believe it, it's, other than the perpendicularity of the, of that short piece of lot line, I believe it's 100 feet long. And item two, and of course, that's why we didn't ask for a waiver because we didn't recognize it when it was needed. Item two, revision block can be done on the final plan for signature. Removing a signature block can also be done. Sanitary sewer provider refers to Manchester rather than London area. That can be corrected. Monumentation along Innovation Way, that's a pretty standard subdivision condition of approval that all, all missing or required monuments be provided as a condition of approval. Item E, of course, once the subdivision is, is made, then we can talk to the assessor about getting proper lot designations. There's some, some notes that, notes P and Q on the plans per section 411 that need to be added, obviously would be added on the final plan. The resource list needs to be added to, et cetera. The topographic plans show inconsistent information for utility sleeves. I did check the plan as we're waiting here tonight. It appears that one of the sleeves across existing Pettingill Road that was installed in 2014, I believe, is in fact existing, but it was, somehow came out with dark ink and they're shown as existing. But we will correct that and any others that I may not have seen tonight in the final plan as a condition of approval.
That's good. It's all the fun.
So in short, I see this as relatively minor administrative type conditions or drafting type conditions that we can add to the plans and, and do not affect the substance of the plan.
Yes. Yeah. Ted's an ex officio. Okay, well, what we'll do, we'll go to staff for input. We'll go to the board for input and then the public for input in regards to this subdivision. Kelly?
Mr. Chair, if the board is going to proceed with a conditional approval, I would just ask that it's subject to the items outlined in the April 5 staff memorandum, which the applicant has just gone through, the design review items.
Can I make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve this with the conditions that the checklist items on the memorandum dated April 5, 2023 are addressed?
I'll second.
Yes. So we need to say design review items as well or is checklist adequate?
Yeah, it'd be all the design review items also.
Also have a, a member that just, you have a member that just came in and.
Oh, yeah. Ted, he's the council ex officio.
I just wanted to make sure that's clear for the record.
Yeah, so there'd be, give us nine voting members now.
Beth, did you have a question? You said something?
Oh, I didn't know. There was no public input.
Okay.
We haven't, we haven't got to that point yet.
Oh, okay. Did make a motion.
Jake's getting like me, trying to move the meeting along too fast.
I think you asked if you couldn't.
I asked if I could make a motion, yeah.
The answer is yes, but after we listen.
At the right time.
Yeah, we gotta listen to the public. Yeah.
Kelly, you can finish what you're saying, you're going to say.
If the board is going to proceed with a conditional approval, as I said, make it subject to the items outlined in the April 5 memorandum. I just wanted to point out that Counselor Combs is here.
Ted has arrived.
And to please open the public hearing if and when you're ready.
Yes. Okay. Okay, what I'll do is go through the board. I'll start with Ian.
I have no questions.
And this is a subdivision at Pettingill Road, one vacant lot being subdivided into two vacant lots.
I have no questions. I'm all okay.
Okay. Jason?
No question.
Lynn?
No questions.
No questions.
Jenny?
No question.
Roger?
Yeah.
Jake?
No questions.
No questions. Okay. Any abutters or any member of the public have any questions, comments, and concerns in regards to this subdivision? This is a two-lot subdivision. I do not see any. Bring it back to the board.
Can I make a motion to approve, approve this site plan with the conditions that it meets the April 5, all the design review questions on the April 5 memorandum?
Design review questions and all the, like waivers we gave for completeness.
Second.
Second by Roger. A further discussion by the board. Sign on all those, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And chair votes abstentions, chair votes affirmative, motion carries 8-1-0. And you have a group subdivision.
Thank you very much, members of the board.
A little unusual, but.
Orthodox subdivision.
I, I think the, it was very reasonable because there's more, I think, administrative, clerical type stuff that was requested.
A lot more to come, certainly.
Yeah. Okay.
I appreciate the board's consideration.
You're welcome. Good, good luck out there.
Thank you.
Okay. Next, we have as a public hearing on an application for a formal review of site plan for a proposed 100,000-square-foot warehouse building and associated site improvements at 26 Jaxbridge Road, tax map 15, lot 103, zone industrial one. Charles Evans is the owner and Rhino Capital Advisors LLC is the applicant. And we need to determine completeness.
Mr. Chair, there are no outstanding checklist items and staff recommends the application be accepted as complete.
So moved.
Motion by Jake, second by Bruce on completeness. Any discussion by the board? Sign on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. That's just, chair votes affirmative, and the application has been accepted as complete. That's the way it usually goes, so. And what this does is start the public hearing, and this also starts the 65-day timeframe in which we have to render a decision.
No peeking.
Is it working?
Can I just bypass the laser pointer?
Whatever your preference.
I, I just can't figure it out. Start with that.
You're going to be certified in that though.
Yeah, I didn't take that course. Hello, everyone. My name is Michael Kavanaugh. I'm the applicant with Rhino Capital Advisors. Rhino is a Boston-based real estate developer specializing in industrial asset class. We're new to London Dairy. As of last fall, we purchased Woodmont Commons down the road here. We also have another project, 13-page road, that we're hoping to present to you guys this time next month. So fingers crossed on that. Here it is. With me is Rich Whitehouse and Jason Plord from VHB. You'll hear from them in a little bit. Let's buzz through. So quick agenda, we'll start high level, bring you up to speed on how we got to this point, talk about the existing site, its location, our proposed site condition, and then close it out with some Q and A. So. Communication review. So this project, we started last May, almost a year now. I mean, it's getting close. I won't go too much into this. The big, the big data highlight is obviously tonight's hearing, so. So site location, so we are off of exit five on Jaxbridge Road. If I had the porn, I'd show it. So that's right where the, the parking lot is, Coca-Cola, Penske, Direct Tire, Harvey, Windows. This area is primarily industrial one zone. You can see there. So the zoning allowed uses there, storage, self-storage warehouse, manufacturing. Our project is warehouse and storage, so. Site overview, our site is a little over eight and a half acres. There's no wetlands, which is, which is great for us. There are easements on the property. Highlighted in yellow is the access easement and utility easement for the cell tower that's there, Crown Castle, highlighted in gray. The blue line you see is the sewer easement for the town. And then there's also a drainage easement up in the upper left-hand corner. If I can. Oh, I can. Look at that. Up there. Snitty, huh? Learning on the job. So here's an aerial shot. So as it is today, there's the cell tower, boom, with the access road. The primary use is obviously the cell tower. The secondary use, as you can see, there's miscellaneous site storage there now. There's that big dirt pile. There's jersey barriers and miscellaneous site materials. So that is the existing site, how it is today. I'll kick it over to Rich to go over our proposed site. Careful.
Yeah, I'll see what I can do. I don't know if I'm going to do as good a job as Mike. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Rich Whitehouse, project manager with VHB. So Mike kind of gave you the overview of how we got to where we are today, the existing site conditions and location. I'll be talking about the proposed conditions. So as you're aware, the, the development program consists of 100,000-square-foot warehouse building with 5,000 square feet of ancillary office space. The site improvements include 100 parking spaces, including electric vehicle charging, 24 loading docks, subsurface stormwater detention and treatment, a retaining wall along the east side of the site, which is towards the top of the screen in this view, and then other associated utility and landscaping improvements, which we'll get into. and then other associated utility and landscaping improvements, which we'll get into a little further into the presentation. Vehicular access you'll see is provided entirely around the building, the only limited access is immediately adjacent to the cell tower that Mike was describing a minute ago in the upper right-hand corner of the building, but otherwise access is provided on all sides. And with the exception of the parking lots, the site layout accommodates WB67 design delivery vehicle, and then even through that front parking lot and the balance of the site, the layout accommodates the town's designed fire apparatus. Cell tower access, Mike mentioned is currently a gravel road that sort of bisects the site and connects the cell tower lease area to Jaxbridge Road. It's actually being relocated to the southern or the right site driveway in the proposed condition, viewed to be an improvement for Crown Castle, given that now they'll have a nice wide paved access for the vast majority of, of the, you know, the path that they need to take to get from the road to their equipment. And then finally, Mike had mentioned the sewer easement that benefits the town, runs along the north and east sides of the property. Access to that is being maintained essentially in its existing location, which is to be accessed from the proposed paved northern driveway, where gravel access road, you'll see there in gray, right along that northern property line, extends off and provides access to the same, the existing gravel access road, serves that easement. And then wanted to mention that two waivers are requested as part of this application. The first through Site Plan Regulation Section 3.08.1B.3 for access points located within 200 feet of each other on the same side of the street. The waiver is requested because existing access to the abutting parcels is very close to the side property boundaries of the project site, precluding compliance with that requirement. And that applies to the driveways on both sides. The second waiver requested is from Site Plan Regulation Section 3.08.1B.6 for driveway width exceeding 24 feet. The southern driveway is the main access driveway to the site for truck traffic and passenger vehicles. That driveway is proposed at 30 feet, just to facilitate easy access for the truck traffic that the site relies on. And then the northern driveway is currently 25 feet. Again, it's, it's a secondary access driveway, but trying to ease truck movements through the site, not make it any more difficult for emergency response should that ever be Next, we'll touch, touch on stormwater management. So, this is, the plan that you're looking at here is a screenshot of the grading and drainage plan, just to sort of give a representation of the grading intent across the site. It's generally pitched from Jaxbridge Road to the east down towards the highway. In the proposed condition, that's, that drainage pattern or that grading pattern is maintained, but to flatten the site to support the development, there's that retaining wall along the east edge that I had mentioned before. Stormwater from across the site is collected in a closed pipe drain system and directed to a stormwater basin that you'll see in the truck court at the rear of the building, sort of between the building and the retaining wall, it's that, that large rectangular gray shaded area. That's a storm tech subsurface detention basin that features an isolator row and sand filter for water quality treatment and provides storage sufficient to predominantly reduce peak rates of stormwater runoff. I think there was one, one event that's, that were matching peak rates, but it's matching or reducing peak rates of runoff across the site. This slide really just highlights the areas that I just discussed and provides a cross-section detail of that stormwater basin, which is also included in the site plans. For erosion controls, the site plans propose a combination of perimeter hay bale and silt fence erosion control barrier on the three low sides of the site, Jaxbridge Road being the high side, a stone construction entrance at both driveway entrances, and hay bale or, and/or silt sack catch basin inlet protection, silt sacks in Jaxbridge Road and sort of one or the other for catch basins installed on the site. Site lighting is provided through the use of both ground-mounted and wall-mounted lighting fixtures, intended to provide a consistent and appropriate light levels for the individual use areas around the site, whether it's parking, the truck court, simple driveway, so forth. The, the lighting design has been established to avoid light trespass onto both the abutting properties and both the abutting public rights of way. Site access and circulation, we talked about before, this figure is really showing the delivery vehicle movements through the site and just kind of giving a representation of how the truck will get to some of the key loading dock positions at the back of the building. Again, the site layout provides access accommodations for that 18-wheeler through the site to the loading dock, with the exception, of course, of that passenger vehicle parking lot there on the south side of the property. This figure is the same, but for the town's designed fire apparatus, again, showing that it circulates from Jaxbridge Road through the site, through the main parking lot, and also having the ability to circulate all the way around the back and then back out to Jaxbridge Road. With that, I will turn it over to Jason Plord with VHB, he's the traffic engineer and can talk to you about the traffic generation for the project.
Good evening, Jason Plord, VHB. You can hold on to it, I only have two slides. So, early on in the process, what we wanted to do is we wanted to take a look at estimates for the proposed development. So, we used the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual to be able to find out how much traffic this development was going to generate. We then met with town staff in March of last year to be able to find out what kind of a traffic study do we need to prepare. Now, the estimated site trips do not meet the town's thresholds in the site plan regulations for a trap, a full traffic study, below 1,000 vehicles per day, below 100 vehicles per hour. But as part of the site plan regulations, Section 3.14.1A.2, the planning department has the right to ask for a full traffic study under special conditions. So, what are the special conditions? Special conditions are that Jaxbridge Road goes to Sims Drive, which then enters the state highway system Route 28. All of our traffic has to come in and out of the state highway system onto the public roadway. Now, when we met with town staff, they said, "We want you to do a full traffic analysis at the Route 28, Sims Drive, Vista Ridge Drive, Signalizer intersection." Not a problem. So, we put that, that together. We also coordinated with Brian Defosis at New Hampshire Department of Transportation, District 5, he's the assistant engineer, to find out if New Hampshire DOT needed to be involved. Do we need a scoping meeting that would bring in New Hampshire DOT, the town, and the Regional Planning Commission? The response we got was, "No, you're not generating a lot of traffic, so you don't need to have a full traffic study or a scoping meeting." In the DOT's mind is that if you're sending 100 vehicles per hour through an intersection, then your development may have a noticeable impact, very similar to the town site plan regulations of generating 100 vehicles per hour. So, corresponded with, with the town staff to make sure that everybody was on the same page. The importance of this is that the town has to be the applicant for any type of a driveway access permit with the state. We're not having a driveway on the state highway system, but at the same time, New Hampshire DOT wants to know how much traffic is coming down Jaxbridge, onto Sims Drive, onto the state highway system. That's the state's way of staying involved with the process. So, the town, that being Mr. Trotter, would have to be the applicant to the state as far as the volume of traffic or additional traffic that would be added to the state highway system. It's really more of a checks and balances sort of a process, so we're certainly open to helping out the town in any aspect that we can. So, then, as a result of that March 2022 preliminary meeting with town staff, we put together the traffic study. We submitted the traffic study in October of last year, went through the existing conditions, future conditions, future conditions without our development, future conditions with our development. And then Stan Tech, the town's peer review consultant, reviewed our traffic study, put together some comments, they needed clarification on different items. And so, we then had a meeting with town staff and Stan Tech officials, we had two meetings in January, one on the 12th and one on the 27th. And we were able to really talk about and clarify, before we put into writing our responses, we wanted to make sure that we could talk it through as far as what the specific concerns were, and we weren't just kind of going around in circles and submitting information, no, that's not what we're looking for. So, that's a whole process, and I really like it the way the town has it set up. So, we submitted a couple of response to comments documents, one in February, one in March, just to clarify different methodologies and to provide some supplemental analyses. If you can go to the next slide. So, in our findings, you know, we also looked at a safety evaluation, we coordinated with the police department to find out about reported crashes in the area, we measured the site distances to make sure that they met the town's requirements of the 365 feet. And then, you know, ultimately, it's a low generator because it's not meeting the town's standards, it's not meeting Institute of Transportation Engineers standards of 100 vehicles per hour, or New Hampshire DOT's standards of 100 vehicles per hour. So, ultimately, the development isn't going to be generating a whole lot of traffic, but it's important, and John Trotter is keeping track of how much traffic is actually going to be going from the local roadway system onto the state highway system. And so, that's why it's kind of a little bit larger of a process that we had to go through than a typical development that may not be anywhere near the state highway system. But, so the next step is that, should we receive approvals, then it's providing all the documentation to Mr. Trotter, so he has that to be able to then file with New Hampshire DOT to provide them with information regarding the additional traffic from Sims Drive onto the state highway system. And that's all I have, if you have any questions, happy to answer them.
Okay. Did you cover the landscaping plan?
Nope, we're still going, sorry.
Okay, you're still going, okay.
Save the questions for Ann.
Thank you.
Hopefully, you're all still with us. Architecture, so this is a concrete tilt-up construction building, peak height 44 feet, it'll include a nice entry canopy with some access panels, accent panels on either side. The panels themselves will be painted, earth tones per the town's lookbook, so a lot of grays, tans, browns, that's the palette right there. Landscape, so we have a good mix of deciduous and evergreen trees, as you can see here, show you the layout.
They look pretty.
Yeah.
All because of the time of year.
Yeah, yeah. Full bloom, they look, they look beautiful. On the site plan, so along Jaxbridge, it's a denser area for a visual barrier in front of the building down along this way, and then trees planted throughout the, the accessway along the parking lot, and then all around the site here, so.
Any purple lilac there?
We don't have any purple lilacs.
That's a steep flower.
You can add a few.
It is.
I have an issue with the landscape plan in that it doesn't address I-93. Major highway goes through our town, and what I've seen from the neighbors to this property, a lot of box trucks and, you know, advertising on the trucks backed up to the fence. I know you're not going to do that here, but it would be nice if you added something around the backside, even if it's on the slope, to improve the look of a massive fence along I-93 and add a little something to that area. There's nothing that I can see there, and I know it seems like there are some trees on both sides of the property, I'm talking north and south, but if you could add something in the backside of there, because it is a front face for, you know, a roadway, major interstate highway, so I'd appreciate something there.
Right.
The profile?
Yeah.
It's in the.
Even if it's a slope.
It is, yeah, so that, yeah, that's, so, back along this, this is the retaining wall, it's, it's pretty high up, and then, like you said, that's the accessway for the sewer, so we did have a profile plan, because we did have trees at, at one point, that's why that red cloud is there, they were there. But the, from this, from the highway, correct me if I'm wrong, Rich, you really wouldn't see if there was a tree there anyways, right?
Yeah, so, so some of the, some of the constraints that we're dealing with there, Mike mentioned, we have the retaining wall, closer to the highway, you almost immediately get into the access, the sewer easement where the gravel access road sits within, obviously we can't unfortunately do any plantings there because it would, it would prohibit access along the, along the sewer line. And then just on the, the backside, we'll call it, of that sewer easement, you're essentially at the state highway right of way. Where the area opens up, there's, starting in the upper left-hand corner, Mike had pointed to this before, where that drainage easement is, that, that I believe is predominantly wooded today, and then just to its right, you'll see it's kind of a gray shaded, it's a stone hatch, if you can see that clearly on the screen, just to the right of that easement area, that's actually an existing stormwater feature that's being maintained and utilized as part of the proposed condition. So, space is really limited over there for any kind of substantial plantings that would, that would screen or soften that retaining wall. And then, as Mike was alluding to before, the other part of it is the highway actually sits lower than that area, so, and then there's a berm between that sewer easement and the highway, so when you look from the highway, the lowest point, the point closest to the ground level that you see is actually up, it'll be up on the retaining wall, so you're not staring at the full face of the retaining wall from the highway, also having the implication that any plantings we did do are probably hidden from view because you'd have to look through the berm in order to see them, this is closer to ground level, if that makes sense.
But what I'll see is a blank wall basically with a fence on the top.
Yeah.
Can you add something hanging down from it, or anything? Just because it's, yeah.
We can look at some.
Anything.
Look at some solutions like that, yeah. Yep.
Because I, I know what you're saying, there's a steep slope there, but, you know, if there was anything you could do, because.
Yeah, well, take a closer look at it, there's, you know, a good portion of the wall is blocked from view from the highway because, again, the ground, the topography is such that the ground actually goes up before you even get to the wall.
I'm very familiar with it.
Yeah, yeah, so you, you know, from driving by it probably, you can see, you know, you can see some portion of the cell tower, you can't see all the way to the ground, and in the proposed condition, we're raising up that eastern edge, so that condition kind of becomes exacerbated. And we had looked at it relative to the loading docks as well, so we became kind of familiar with how visible things are from the highway as well. But all that said, we can take a look at, at what you suggested.
See if you can do something, you know, loading dock, the loading docks are farther end, I understand that less chance of seeing unless you're going north on that side.
Sure.
Are we, BD, or something, you know, might, might work.
Well, see what you can do, but.
Look at that.
The rest of the landscaping looks good to me. But I, this was just, you can continue now.
That's the last slide, yeah.
I do have more comments I can add later.
So, we'll, we'll open it up to questions now, if you want to add to that, or.
Okay, signage?
So, we don't have a tenant yet, so we really don't have signage, we don't know what it's going to be. We did talk about that at the Heritage Meeting, so when we do identify a tenant, then we'll go back and, and present that.
Okay, we'll do, we'll go to staff, and David Devey is here to add input for traffic. So, we'll do Kelly, the board, and then the public input.
Mr. Chair, there are two waiver requests. First is a waiver from Section 3.08.1B.3 of the Site Plan Regulations to allow construction of the proposed driveway within 200 feet of the abutting property's existing driveway. Staff supports the granting of this waiver as a proposed site driveway has been located to provide safe access and egress with appropriate site distance. The second waiver is from Section 3.08.1B.6 of the Site Plan Regulations to allow a driveway greater than 24 feet in width, where only 36 feet are allowed by an exception of this board. Staff supports the granting of this waiver due to the configuration of the site and for allowing trucks and other vehicles to access the site. In addition to the waivers, there are a number of outstanding design review items primarily relating to obtaining the typical required state permits, the sewer profile design and the drainage analysis. Additionally, there are three outstanding traffic comments for which the applicant has responded to, however, that response wasn't part of this formal submission. has responded to. However, that response wasn't part of this formal submission and so we haven't, staff hasn't reviewed that at this time. So if you'd like to act on the waivers.
Yeah, once they get the public input and everything, we'll, we'll do the waivers. Traffic, is Art, was staff, you have any input on this at all, David?
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, could you go to the microphone, please?
I'm coming to the mic to say that I think Jason has said everything that needs to be said relative to traffic with the exception of what, what Kelly has said, that there is a memo that, timing-wise, the responses have been provided. Quick look, it seems like it's mostly there, but, but that's not my call, that's staff's call.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, go to the board. Start with Jake this time.
Mr. Chair, I am all set, sir.
You are? Okay, good.
Look at that.
Bruce, yeah.
I'm all set.
Roger.
Looks good to me.
Okay. And let the record show that Gianni Barani has stepped down from this plan.
All set.
No questions.
No questions.
Jason.
Ted. One of my big concerns is snow storage. Where are you planning on putting snow storage? Are you planning on getting rid of it immediately and putting on trucks?
The landscape plan, Mike, if you want to flip to that slide. So you'll see on this plan, there are gray shaded areas located around the site, of course, adjacent to paved areas. We tried to identify the open areas and create some new open areas between plantings that would lend themselves well to snow storage. And then if necessary, excess would be removed.
Down here as well.
Yeah, that's required, so.
And then, where do you plan to put HVAC units? On the roof or are you putting them in the?
On the roof.
On the roof, okay. I just didn't see them on the plan.
Yeah, it could change. It depends on when we get a tenant, their needs, and really don't know right now.
Okay. A quick question for staff, if I may. Kelly, when we have a 50-foot height requirement in town, does that also include HVAC units? I see the building's going to be 44 feet.
It does. So I, I think they can stay well within the 50 feet though.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
All set?
Yes.
Ian?
I have a question from staff, for staff also. Jack's Bridge Road, can it be any 18-wheeler parking on it?
No.
Okay. Just, I'm very familiar with the road. I walk it a lot. And I've seen three 18-wheelers stacked up heading down the hill, parked up there near this property.
No vehicles should be parking along.
Okay, thanks.
They weren't ours, so.
I, I know. Not, no. I know, but I just.
That would certainly be a police issue.
Yeah. Yeah. There's no stacking there overnight or.
Corrected. But that would be a police issue if it wasn't concerned.
Okay, thank you. I have no questions. It looks like great design and.
Thank you.
It's good.
Heritage was happy, so. Are there any butters or anyone from the public? Any questions, comments, or concerns in regards to the site plan?
Hi, Deb Paul, 118 Hardy Road. I guess I'm confused with the traffic study because if you don't know who's going to be there, how can you guesstimate what the traffic flow or the amount of traffic is going to be if you don't know who the tenant is? And I keep hearing the word vehicle. There's a huge difference between a vehicle and an 18-wheeler or truck. One truck on a road is equivalent to 84 cars in traffic, meaning wear and tear on our roads, which means our maintenance plans for maintaining these roads are going to have to increase because they're going to be ripping up the tar a lot more, or the pavement, a lot more than a vehicle. So I just want to take those things into consideration in your traffic study because there is a huge, huge difference between an 18-wheeler and the damage it does on a road and a car. And I just can't understand how you can evaluate how much anticipated traffic there will be, how many trucks there will be, if you don't know who the person is in the building. Thank you.
Notes are being taken. Any, any response to that? Yes, please.
Thank you. So we used Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual for a warehouse. And the warehouse land use code also provides a breakdown of total trips and number of trucks. In the traffic study, we had to identify the number of trucks. So it's all spelled out in the traffic study because the site plan regulations talk about an increase of truck traffic on the adjacent roadway system. And if it hits a certain percentage, then you have to do a further evaluation. So we use the ITE trip generation methodologies for a warehouse. So what that is, is that it's a database, the, the Trip Generation Manual is a database of existing counts counted or collected at existing facilities throughout the country. So other warehouses have already been counted, they're put into this database, and you do your calculations based on the square footage of your development. Now, if this was a different type of a use other than a warehouse, then our numbers may need to be adjusted. But we came in with a warehouse. If it's anything other than a warehouse, then it would have to be reevaluated.
Yeah. We'd have to come in and change our use.
Exactly.
Anyone else?
Giovanni Barani, 73 Page Road. So, you know, this is right down the street from the, the gas station. What was it, what's the gas station brand?
Noria.
Noria. And I remember, I was sitting right there, going through almost a year of agita over the traffic study and traffic that was caused at Sims Drive and Jack's Bridge Road. And we don't necessarily know who the tenant is. And you dump in all that traffic right in the same location. Now, I thought that what we went through was a little overstated, and I'm not sure, in my personal opinion, was that it was warranted. But we don't even know the tenant. I mean, I know he's stating that it's a warehouse use and that you can generalize all of that use in one category. But, I mean, that's the town's traffic engineer right there. And it's like, it didn't even come up. It's just.
Same road, but no issue.
It's like, wow. You know, you're, you're looking at one and you, you put them through, we put them through hell. And it's the same type of.
No drive-through.
Yeah, well, that was different. That was a different issue, right? The drive-through and then the chat. So, I, there's just no, there's no parallel to it. I mean, it's a comment. Work can do what they want. But I'm looking at this going, oh. So.
It's a lot bigger than a gas station, is what you're saying.
It's 100,000 square feet versus 3,500.
So, I don't know.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do you appear to have a response to that?
Yes, well, why don't you, yeah, that's like comparing apples and oranges.
Yeah. Well, Jason talked about the ITE Trip Generation Manual. And, and indeed it is. It's a, well, it's multiple manuals about that, that tall. And it's always being added to. And before we know, you know, e- even if you know who it is that's going in, you still look through that manual for that land use code as it's referred to. And the statistics are there that, you know, we, we work with. We don't, we're not saying that we know exactly what the traffic is, but we can clearly say that a gas station is going to be generating this many trips. And frankly, it doesn't take too many pumps to generate more trips than what a warehouse, because there aren't a lot of trips associated with the warehouse. Both studies were reviewed and I think, frankly, appropriate amount of time in that review for each of those. One of them changed a lot, so that's why there was a, was a, a bit of more time spent on that one. But, but just for the record, there's the needed review for both of those developments.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the board. We have two waivers to make a decision on and then the conditional approval itself.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant the applicant's request for two waivers as outlined in the staff recommendation memorandum dated April 5, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Al. Second by Jake. Any discussion on the motion of the two waivers? Seeing none, all in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Extentions, chair votes affirmative.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant conditional approval of a formal review of a site plan for a proposed 1,000, 100,000 square foot warehouse building and associated site improvements, 26 Jack's Bridge Road, map 15, lot 103, zone industrial one, Charles Evans owner and Rhino Capital Advisors LLC applicant, in accordance with plans prepared by VHB dated October 13, 2023. Last.
Yeah.
Yeah. What's the date on that? Should that be 2022?
Yep.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to revise that to October 13, 2022. Last revised, March 16, 2023, with the precedent conditions to be fulfilled within 120 days of the approval and prior to plan signature and general and subsequent conditions of approval to be fulfilled as noted in the staff recommendation memorandum dated April 5, 2023, and traffic memo dated March 13, 2023.
Okay. Motion for conditional approval by Al. Second by Jake.
Yes.
Any discussion by the board? Seeing none, all those in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Extentions, chair votes affirmative. And the record lists Gianni has stepped down, so it'd be 8-0-0. Okay. One thing about warehouses, there was a big study done years ago, it's on Cape Cod, Massachusetts. Warehouses have the, are the most positive for taxes in any town or, or city. Your fast food places are usually a bit of a negative impact because of the amount of police required.
I'm going to keep that for the next one.
And of course, your three bedroom houses, if it's full of kids, it's a, it's a negative impact. Okay, so you have conditional approval and you're all set.
Excellent.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yes.
Guys talked about all your trees in bloom on your landscape improvement. They're all about to die. They're not blooming.
Oh, Jesus.
You have a problem.
Okay. Next, we have a public hearing on an application for a formal review of a subdivision plan to subdivide 11 Sergeant Road, tax map nine, lot 42, zone agricultural residential one, into 13 single-family residential lots. Bruce L. McKay and Peter Wright are the owners, and DHB Homes LLC is the applicant. Man.
Good evening.
Let's see, we have to do completeness first.
Mr. Chair, there are no outstanding checklist items in stack. Recommend the application be accepted as complete.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to accept the application as complete for staff recommendation memorandum dated April 5, 2023.
Second.
Motion for completely, a second by Ted. Any discussion on completeness? Seeing none, all those in favor. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Extentions, chair's affirmative and Jake has taken a rest. Okay, the application is complete and starts the public hearing and also starts a 65-day timeframe in which we have to render a decision. So, identify yourselves for our records, please.
Sure. Good evening. My name's George Chadwick with Bedford Design, here representing DHB Homes on a project located at 11 Sergeant Road. If the board recalls, we were here several months ago, conceptually, to talk to the board about the proposed subdivision. We had since gone in front of the Conservation Commission, the Heritage Commission, as well as submitted plans for design review. We have addressed all the, the comments from design review, although there is two waivers that need to be acted upon. Let me go through the, the subdivision a little bit for you and then maybe we can talk about the waivers. As I stated, it's a subdivision at 11 Sergeant Road. It's a approximately 1,000-foot-long road ending, terminating in a cul-de-sac with 13 homes to be built. The drainage is handled via closed drainage system and directed to a, a detention basin. All the drainage from the roadways and the homes have been accounted for. So when someone comes in with a, a home plan, there's a certain percentage of impervious area that's allotted to each of the individual lots, as long as that home plan comes in, less than the amount of impervious area that has all been taken care of in the initial drainage design. There actually is two detention basins. One adjacent to the larger wetland on the project, which will handle all of the lots and the road except for two. There is a second small detention basin located in the bottom right-hand corner of the plan that you have in front of you to handle the two lots that are adjacent to that. We did look at the increase in runoff to all the abutting properties, and I can say that there's either a, a decrease to all the surrounding properties. If there's a specific one, I can give you more details on that. Or there was no drainage directed to that properly, property initially. Property's basically all to the left of the plan in front of you. Currently don't have any drainage being discharged to them. The road is a typical town roadway with granite curb and a sidewalk on the eastern side or the lower portion of the road. That sidewalk connects out through Sergeant Road up to the town parcel in the bottom of the plan. Our sidewalk dead-ends adjacent to Sergeant Road where the town parcel abuts us via, there's a stone wall there. We have addressed, to my knowledge, all of the design review comments. I did get a, a memo tonight regarding some additional comments that need to be addressed. I did review them. I think I can handle them all fairly easy with staff. So with that, I guess I'd like to speak a little bit about the waivers. The first waiver is from section 3.09E, Table 1 of the town requirements, and that has to do with the horizontal alignment of town roads. The horizontal alignment for a 35 mile an hour road is about 500 feet, or is 500 feet, centerline radius. Our centerline radius is a little bit less than that. We've got a 275-foot horizontal curve, which allows a speed of 25 to 30 miles an hour. The reason we're asking for the waiver is that it's only a few hundred feet away from a stopped condition. And with the design of the road as shown on the plan, it allows us to limit the amount of wetland impact that would be necessary to, to build the road. Currently, there's a discharge point from Sergeant Road that discharges onto the property and it runs through a, a sort of a, a drainage ditch that over time has turned into a wetland. So we did receive the wetland impact, or excuse me, the wetland permit for that impact. But in order to minimize the amount of wetland impact, we are asking for that reduction in the horizontal alignment. The second waiver that is being requested is section 3.09K of the subdivision regulations, which requires slopes be graded three to one, a side slope of the road to be designed, excuse me, which requires the side slope to be four to one. We are asking for a waiver to allow us to build a short section of the road, and that's between Station 175 and 400 left. And that's the same area where the wetland is on the left in order to avoid additional wetland impact. So those are the two waivers. We did look at the traffic. We did, similar to the project before us, we contacted the state regarding this particular development. Mr. Defosis over at District 5 said there was no necessity for them to be involved. over at District Five said there was no necessary for them to be involved in this project due to the minor amount of additional traffic being discharged out onto Mammoth Road. I believe your Public Works Director also agrees with that consensus. With that, I can get into more detail if the board chooses, but it's a nine-lot subdivision with a standard town road. And I do have all-state permits from the wetland permit, the alteration of terrain permit that's necessary, as well as the state subdivision permit that was necessary.
Okay, we will get staff's input, we have the board input, and then we'll go for public input, so.
Yes, Mr. Chair, there are two waiver requests this evening. One from section three point oh nine E, table one of the subdivision regulations, to allow construction of the proposed roadway not in compliance with proper horizontal design for a thirty-five mile per hour roadway, for the purpose of limiting wetland impact. The second waiver is from section three point oh nine K of the regulations relating to slopes graded at three H, one V. Staff supports the granting of this waiver as the requirement of four H, one V slope would result in wetland impacts which otherwise could be avoided.
waiver number one, staff is leaving that to the discretion of the board.
Correct. In terms of outstanding design review items, there are several items primarily related to the sidewalk construction within the development and along Sergeant Road. And then there are several items related to the topographic plans, such as meets and bounds descriptions, owner's signature blocks, existing tree lines, additional comments relating to construction detail, and site systems plans, as well as the stormwater management report.
All set?
All set.
Okay, I'll go through the board. I'll start with Ann.
I had no questions, but I had a comment. You said twelve, thirteen homes being built? It's twelve plus one remaining house, okay. And that drainage ditch was the original town road, an early town road. Just, other than that, I'm fine. I'm all set.
Okay, Ted?
I'm all set with the plans. Everything looks great.
Jason?
So, Ann, actually, so you're planning on keeping the existing building, the house that's there right now?
What we've represented to the board conceptually, and the Heritage Commission, is that if at all possible, we will keep the existing house. We haven't had a chance to go in and do a, a financial look-through. I mean, if it's all loaded with termites and stuff, obviously, we're not gonna be able to keep it. But it does have a lot of character, it does give a good backdrop to the project, so if we can, we will.
That's all.
Okay.
How about the barn?
As well.
Okay, thanks.
So my only question goes to lot forty-two eleven. There's a discontinued road going down that. And there's a note on the plan talking about the road being discontinued, and there is a kind of an undetermined utility right-of-way on that as well. But does the town, have, have we confirmed that the town does not own that? I, I abut a discontinued road.
Sure.
And nobody owns the road, so that's why I'm curious about it. I'd hate to see somebody buy that lot and all of a sudden, hey, your house is in the wrong place.
I guess the old Kelly Road goes.
It is, and the road has been discontinued formally by the town. So, I don't believe the town has any additional rights to it. They do have flowage rights to discharge stormwater through it, and we are maintaining those flowage, flowage rights, and actually, we've submitted slope easement documents, and site dis-easement documents, and access easement documents for the sidewalk, and flowage right easements documents to, to the town for review. And I assume they're being reviewed by town council.
That's correct, yep.
Yeah, so I guess that's my only question, just to have, you know, our legal team just confirm that we don't have any desire to maintain any control over that piece of property.
Aside from the, the flowage rights, no, it's been discontinued for other, for all other purposes.
Long time ago.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so the classics road, there's, there's parts of it, there's still houses of it, just off of the field road.
Right, yep.
So it's like you say, we, you know, we abut a class six road that's been discontinued.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause when it's been.
Nobody owns it. Didn't go to our property, didn't go to my neighbors.
Oh, really? Because when, when a road is discontinued, you have to go to the town council for, for discontinuance. It's split down the middle, and half goes to one property and the other half goes to the other.
Doesn't look that way.
Oh, it should.
It actually, that is a true statement. The only exception to that is if someone purchased the right-of-way in fee. Okay, so right now, there's sort of, the town typically has a prescriptive right over most of the town roads, so that when the road is discontinued, each abutter on each side goes to the centerline, and you each get half. If the right-of-way was purchased in fee, there still may be some legality as to ownership of that road, even if it was formally discontinued by the town.
Okay, I, I'm okay with the answer, and I'm not gonna pursue it any further, but it's just kind of odd that the situation that we have is different than the situation in New Hampshire.
Sure.
New Hampshire, the road is, is layered, so it could be various rights that are still.
Active underneath, correct.
Okay, Al?
Yeah, the only question I have is for Kelly. How far out of compliance are they with the horizontal design for a thirty-five mile an hour roadway?
Uh, I think the applicant could answer that more accurately.
So, your town requires that, based on ASHTO, the road be designed for a thirty-five mile an hour speed limit. Our road's designed for a thirty mile an hour speed limit.
So should it, if, I mean, if we do approve this waiver, should that road be posted for thirty?
We certainly can do that.
And the only way speed limits are changed is town council.
Excuse me?
The only way speed limits are changed, you have to go to town council.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy with that answer, and it's a cul-de-sac with only, you know, twelve houses on it, so I have no issue with that waiver.
I suspect the people in the street are gonna moderate that speed.
Yeah, I suspect.
Ten.
Yeah, at least it keeps the town on the legal side of it.
Sure, sure, sure.
Johnny?
I have no questions or comments.
Roger?
You took my only question.
I'm sorry.
And you will post, put the, the signs up.
If the board asks us to, we can.
You can make that a conditional, condition of approval, is posted for thirty.
Could we word the condition that if allowed by town council, it to be posted for thirty? I don't want to have to come back to you if they say no.
We have, as a developer, we have no issue with a lower speed limit. We'll go twenty-five, if you prefer.
It's an area where it should be lower, but, you know, it's all in the enforcement of it, so, and we've had a lot of, well, we have complaints everywhere about speed.
Sure.
Okay, Bruce?
Uh, I'm excited about a sidewalk.
Jake?
That was a big topic last night. So it goes as part of the plan.
No, I think this is gonna be a, a great neighborhood.
Are there any abutters, or any of the public, have they questions, comments, or concerns about this subdivision? I do not see any. We'll bring it back to the board.
You have one comment?
Pardon?
You have one for the record?
Oh, it's right in front of me. Thank you. Best way to hide things on me, put it right in front. So, there is a letter from Mr. and Mrs. Kevin Wetter, who lives at Five King Charles Drive in Londonary. And on April fifth, they wrote to Kelly, myself, and the Town of Londonary Planning Board. My name is Kevin Wetter, and Stephanie and I have been residents of Londonary for just over two years at Five Kings Charles Drive. I'm writing to the board today with regards to the application for a formal review of a subdivision plan to subdivide eleven Sergeant Road, tax map nine, lot forty-two, zone AR one, into thirteen single-family residential lots. Unfortunately, travel delays are preventing us from attending today's meeting, but we have written this letter in hopes that this will be read into the record. As an abutter to the property in question, we have concerns regarding how the current plan, as currently proposed, will affect the ability of us, as well as other abutters, to the property in question, including the town itself, to maintain the current levels of privacy that section one point one A of the town zoning ordinance says that is intended to protect. Also, we believe the current plan does not adequately prevent overcrowding of the land, and may cause undue congestion of population. Again, that section one point one A states ordinance is intended to prevent. In addition, this plan will negatively impact the open space, particularly the walking path trail that starts at the corner of King Charles and King Philip, and goes to the public fields, space behind the public buildings on Sergeant Road. It is a way that will take away from the natural features that residents of the town, including us, currently enjoy. Are you the owner of what they evidently use as a trail, that property?
Not aware of a trail. There's a trail that comes off the end of King Charles that cuts the corner, but nowhere near where they live.
Oh, okay, but it, it is, is it your property?
No.
This particular property?
Yeah, so the, they're talking about the walking path. Is that part of your property or not?
I don't recall what, what walking path that, I'm hearing about this for the first time, so I don't know what.
Does the stone wall define the boundary of your property?
Yeah.
Then it's not, it's not interfering with the, the walking path from King Charles to the ball fields.
Yeah, if you look at our plan, you can sort of see it dashed. I don't know if you can see it real well, right where, yeah, right where she has the cursor, right there.
That's where it is. So it's not on your property, it is on someone's anyway. But evidently, they, you know, there's, there's gonna be no interference with this, this path, okay. As you can see from the attached pictures, we are currently enjoying a reasonable level of privacy from all the neighbors. It's the primary reason why we moved to Londonary in the first place from Metro Mass.
I walk better.
Nice stone wall picture. Let me see, this, this will be attached to the, the minutes anyway, for everyone to, to view. There's another picture here, but he continues, "These pictures demonstrate that we currently enjoy a level of privacy where we're free from seeing, hearing, anything from our neighbors to the south and east of our property. If the proposed plan were allowed to proceed, the only trees that would remain in place would be two large pines in the background of figure two that are rooted on our side of the property wall. The rest would either be the back of a new dwelling from the corner of our house to the background shed, and an empty drainage ditch which views to view, to new construction cul-de-sac. This poses a number of problems, including a lack of wind blocking, which could pose a threat to our existing structures on the property, a decrease of sound absorption from passing planes traveling from, to and from Manchester Airport, and overall providing an unsightly view for us and our neighboring homes. Furthermore, the amount of impermeable ground cover being introduced by this proposed plan is such that we would need to create a large drainage system that would be mere feet from the swing set play system on our property, that is frequently used by our friends and family, small children. Further, the town would then have to carry the cost of maintaining this drainage long-term. On top of that, this has the potential to attract pests that would otherwise not be present, given the current landscape of the surrounding properties. Without an outline of what these anticipated costs would be to the town, or without adequate protection from pests and/or accidental entry, it would be irresponsible for the town to allow the drainage system to be built without further analysis or work. Even more, the property in question also abuts a frequently used hiking trail between the Kings Neighborhood and the playground and ball fields on Sergeant Road. The subdivision go through this trail would no longer be the cozy wooded hiking trail, but just another dirt path behind someone's home. We completely understand and recognize that in order for our town to continue to prosper, we need to continue growth in areas where it can be done, but only where, how it is appropriate. This plan does not meet that appropriate standard, in our opinion, without remediation. Proceeding with this plan without providing a natural buffer, the planned subdivisions in existing properties, public use areas, will take away from Londonary's character to a point where we believe that the planning board would not be upholding the core tenants' intentions of the zoning ordinance they have laid out for the town without additional stipulations. We therefore request that the board require that either a suitable depth of tree line along the borders of all existing abutters be required to be maintained during and after the subdivision activities. We recommend at least twenty-five feet of tree line, or a suitable compensation to provide by the applicant to the abutters, so that they can reasonably maintain their current level of privacy and free enjoyment of open space that is providing, you know, planting, climate, area, appropriate trees, shrubberies to the abutters on existing borders. We hope the planning board will take these points into consideration when deciding whether to approve the plan, and we wait and look forward to working with our neighbors to ensure that everyone gets the equitable outcome we deserve. Sincerely, Kevin and Stephanie Wetter, Five King Charles Drive." And that is their, their input. They only can control the vegetation that is on their properties. We've seen this countless times, this type of response, because when it's someone else's property, it's, way New Hampshire is, that's their property. So I don't know if you wanted to comment on that, or if there's any provision for at least keeping any of the natural vegetation there?
I believe they're talking about where the drainage pond is positioned, and that's right where, okay, keep going if you could.
You want me to pull up the?
That one right there is good. So that is a drainage easement that's being proposed for the roadway and lot drainage. Their house is located to the right of that, yeah, all the way to the right under the word tax is where their home is located, and I believe they've got some sort of pool or whatever located right there. I guess I'll let their, their letter speak for themselves. I'm not sure there's much additional vegetation that I can offer at this point. I guess their, a good chunk of their, the back of their lot is, is wet, so whether we create a new detention pond, or the area behind the house stays wet, I think the, the land is what it is.
Yeah.
So, and I'll let their letter, the letter speak for itself.
I, I know we've had problems when EverSource increased the, or actually did cutting for the full widths of their rights-of-way, that there were a lot of complaints from people that lost their, their buffer.
Sure.
Well, those trees were on, you know, EverSource property and, and not their own, so there was, you know, at least some conversation with, with EverSource, but it's, it's, it's a public situation where you.
Sure.
But. Do you know roughly what the depth of those lots are on the north side of Londonary?
I could find it for you, but I can say that based on the drainage design, the homes will be located in and around where the wording is on those lots, and not way to the back. So, the only area that we really need to, to cut is where the pond is.
They look like they're deep lots as well.
Yeah, they are. They're good-sized lots.
I think lot forty-two eight is probably the one that is most in question. I would assume you guys are not cutting all the way to the back of the lot line there. You're just cutting for the house and.
Correct, our homes are.
Looks like there's gonna be a good couple hundred feet, but the end of the lawn, if you will, and the edge of their actual property line there is still gonna be a few hundred foot upper there of untouched trees, correct?
Yeah, I, I don't have a specific number for you, and I wouldn't want to misspeak, but I can tell you that the homes will be built toward the front.
But remember, when you guys had your conceptual, a lot of it was toward the back, because you had a nice colored traffic along.
Yeah, 'cause, where you call your, the conceptual, maintaining a lot of the natural vegetation there.
Yeah, we, building the new homes, we prefer to keep, just, just as they want a buffer from us, we, you know, everybody wants, moves to New Hampshire to have that nice, you know, some sort of seclusion. So, our goal is to have, you know, aside from what we need to, to build the homes, we, we, we tend to leave more trees than take them. That way, you can always.
Yeah, some developers, I know, especially, you know, seventies, eighties here, they would just take everything down and then build on that. And you see. And you see some subdivisions, they try to leave as much vegetation. The only thing, ruin some of the trees, the trees end up dying anyway.
Sure. Yeah, these would be very expensive homes, so, you know, the more buffer that can be left, you know, I'm sure would be preferable.
Yeah, everyone wants their, their buffer. If you buy the lots around you, then you got plenty of buffer. Okay, board, so we have two, two waivers. They are, let me find it here.
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Waiver one, I don't know if you want to take these separately in case someone might disagree or, you know, take them together, but I think waiver one would, if the board is in favor of that, would require conditions on the plan for.
I was going to add a condition to the approval of.
Okay, okay.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to grant the applicant's request for two waivers. Excuse me, is outlined in the staff recommendation memorandum dated April 5th, 2023 with regard to waiver one, to also allow speed posting below 35 miles an hour as determined by the town.
That sounds like what we talked about? Town Council.
Town Council, yes, yep.
But I don't think that they were okay with it being, like, if they couldn't get it, it wouldn't be a conditional approval.
Correct.
Well, it would require the approval of the Town Council, though. If they don't approve it, then it doesn't exist.
Well, I think if they don't approve it, then they would not get the waiver. I, I think I understand what you're saying.
Oh, I think Johnny's saying yes, yeah, yeah, yeah.
If they said no, leave it at 35 miles an hour, then technically, they would not be granted that waiver, therefore not granted.
Like, they're willing to do it, but they don't want to hold up the plan.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll withdraw that and just go with the original motion.
Yep, second.
Okay, motion made by Al, second by Jake, for approval of both waivers. Any discussion by the board?
Just to confirm, that's a motion to grant the applicant's request for two waivers as outlined in the staff recommendation memorandum, and that's it.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
I'm all set then.
You're all set?
Yes.
Okay. Seeing no, no discussion from the board, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. And Chair, Chair votes nay, and motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to grant conditional approval of a subdivision plan to subdivide 11 Sergeant Road, MAP 9 Lot 42, Zone AR1, into 13 single-family residential lots. Bruce L. McKay and Peter Wright, owners, and DHB Homes LLC, applicant, in accordance with plans prepared by Bedford Design Consultants dated September 28th, 2022, last revised January 27th, 2023. With precedent, conditions to be fulfilled within 120 days of the approval and prior to plan signature, and general and subsequent conditions of approval to be fulfilled as noted in the staff recommendation memorandum dated April 5th, 2023.
Mr. Chair, Beth did.
I'm just the timeframe because it's a subdivision, so it should be two years.
Yes.
Two years, not 120 days, two years.
Two, two.
Two years, okay, yep.
Okay, motion by Al.
Second.
Second by Jake. Any discussion by the board?
Just to confirm, my second is two years, not 120 days.
Yes. Okay, seeing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Bench is, Chair was affirmative, and the subdivision plan is conditionally approved.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the board's time.
You're welcome. Okay, and we've taken care of the three because they are continued to the 10th of May, 23. Thank you, Gianni. Okay, any other business for the board? The only thing I want to mention is the Office of Planning and Development has their noon seminar on the 20th. See, I'll get information about that. You have to sign up for it. And also, the Planning Conference put on by the Office of Planning and Development is on the 29th of April, 23. That is, you could buy Zoom webinar. And it starts at quarter nine and goes to, I think, about 3:00, 3:00 PM. So it's pretty much an all-day event. And they kind of review what planning boards should, should know, should be doing, but also recent legislative changes that change some of our method of operation. And also, you know, any court cases that affect the way we do, do business, so. Highly recommend it. Hopefully, it's not a good sunny day at all, but unless you go and take the computer outside and listen, take notes.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I vote to adjourn, second by Jake. All those in favor of adjourn, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.